Good evening, everybody. The time is 5:37 on Tuesday, May 18th. And I'd like to call the public forum for the budget discussion to order. And that's, yeah, right, this is a takeaway. Okay.
Alex, we're hoping you can hear. Okay, good evening, everyone. So, this is our public hearing. We'll be going through a presentation that we've seen a few times already. There are some added slides in here, just for more people that might not be numbers people, more visual. But there is no new information in here. I'd like to get through this, the slides as quickly as possible, so we can leave as much time for, obviously, questions from the community. And questions from you guys. However, if you do have some questions, clarifying questions as I'm going through this, just let me know. Does that work for everybody?
Sounds good. Alex, do we have people on? I can't see participants or whatever. People? Okay, great.
This first slide, again, we start every presentation with this, just our strategic plan. We, all decisions that we make are, you know, based on these four strategies. And the budget is no different. You know, the budget's built on, you know, putting each of our requests and everything that we need into one of these four strategies. So, this is a three-year budget comparison. This is going back FY '20, FY '21, and FY '22. Chapter 70, required local contribution, the additional town allocation, which was that override from a number of years ago. Up until FY '20, we were getting $305,797 each year. Last year, or this current year, excuse me, FY '21, it was reduced to $205,797. And for FY '22, it has been proposed to reduce that to $105,797. Next line, transportation. Again, that third line, for FY '22, at least, a $10.754. That's the total amount of money, either from chapter 70, required local contribution, and the town for the fiscal year. Next line is our in-kind contribution. Reduce that from the $10.754, and you get the $8.188048. And that's what I like to call the cash or the check that the town actually cuts to the school department to operate for a given fiscal year. The next line, you'll see this, this line, the 10, 411710, is less than previous numbers and previous presentations, because these do include the projected reductions and cuts that we've made. And then that last line is the funding gap between what our operational budget is and what our allocation is from the town. Questions? This is all the same information, just in chart form. Again, really more for folks that aren't great with numbers and great with visuals. Question? Again, so just a chart, just taking the numbers from the slide before and just putting them in this format, so we can see the changes over the last three years. This is a three-year comparison of our revenue, broken down by grants up top. And our revolving on the bottom, our grants are entitlement grants, they're formula-driven grants. Title I, Title II, Title IV, our special education IDA grant. And then for FY '21 and FY '22, we had CARES money due to the pandemic. So that's just a three-year snapshot comparison. Revolving athletics, circuit breaker, and school choice, which are two big revolving accounts that really help us offset our operational budget. Again, we've discussed this and mentioned it numerous times over the last few years, that, you know, we're using the full amount of this revenue, all of it, but in particular, circuit breaker and school choice. We're using that full amount each year to offset or help offset our operational budget. And that's not sustainable. That's nothing new. Again, we've talked about that over the last few years. So, we're not going to be able to sustain offsetting our operational budget with these revenues. So certainly, something that we're going to have to look at for next year's budget process and future year's budget process, and how we can change, you know, the way we're using that funding. Just quickly on the CARES. So the CARES for FY '21, there was two allotments, ESER I and ESER II. So combined, they totaled, the first one was $297,968. We received that in FY '21. We use that for various things. Some staffing, mostly for PPE supplies, and the rest for either software or hardware technological needs to get our kids either back in school or provide them sufficient hardware and software while we were doing remote learning. For FY '22, this is ESER II, the $292,308. That's, that is an amount that has been allocated, hasn't been awarded. We will do that grant application over the next couple of weeks or so, at the district level and school committee level, and we'll involve as many stakeholders as possible. That funding will be available on July 1st, 2021, and we have until September of 2023 to use it. So it's over a two-and-a-half-year span. However, for FY '22, we are using most, if not all of it, to help reduce our operational budget. We've added a few positions, which we can talk about later. We've added a few positions for next year, again, not knowing what our schools will look like in the fall. And then there's ESER III, which right now is just a projected amount. And that was released in the most recent stimulus package, the American Recovery Package, I believe it's called. And that projected amount right now, this is solely a projection. These numbers aren't finalized, but it's around $635,000 that the district would be receiving in ESER III. And that money would be, we'd be eligible to use that money through September of 2024. So almost three-and-a-half years to use that funding. I will note, that allocation, we have not offset any of this year's budget with that allocation. We were pretty clear from the start that that money shouldn't be used to offset our operational budget. We were clear at the joint meeting with the Finance Committee and Select Board. And a few Finance Committee members agreed that we shouldn't be using that money to help offset our operational budget. We should be using that money to deal with some of the effects of the pandemic within a district. And especially at the high school, we've all come to know that there's an air ventilation problem in the high school. So we should be using that money to fund those types of things, to get kids back into a school that's healthy for instruction. There are also a few requirements of that grant. One-fifth of it needs to be spent, so in this case, about $125,000 needs to be spent on enrichment, whether it's tutoring, summer, within the school day, something to, that's going to, you know, gauge what we lost during the pandemic in instruction and bring that instruction back up to where it should be. So, there's one, there's one thing that we need to use that for, and that's some enrichment. The rest can be used, and I've said this plenty of times, the rest can be used for essentially anything. However, we shouldn't be using it to help offset our operational budget. And we can talk a little further about that later on in the presentation. Any questions about revenue or grants before I go forward? This is, again, it's just a chart visually, just to show the last three years comparisons for revenue. This one is for our grants. This one is for revenue athletics, circuit breaker, school choice, and our sped revolving. Still revolving, so that revenue started in FY '20, I believe, Carol. This is for a student that we are receiving from Holyoke. We are providing him service in district. Holyoke is paying us. And next year, FY '22 will be the last year that we will be providing services and receiving tuition from Holyoke. So FY '22 will be the last year we'll be getting that $80,000 or so from Holyoke. Three-year in-kind comparison. Again, we've seen this, we've seen this a lot over the last few weeks. The biggest increases over the last couple of years are into employee insurance and employee retirement. Again, these are services that the town charges back to us each year. So here's our summary for FY '22. And you'll see down at the bottom, we started with a deficit a couple of months ago. It was just below $700,000. We made some changes. It was up to about $727,000. And we were tasked to try to reduce some of our operating budget to reduce the deficit. So we have done that, and we will see those projected reductions in the next slide or two. But that's where we are right now. We're at a projected deficit of about $450,000 as it stands right now. Again, this is just a chart to see, you know, where our money, where the money that we get comes from. A lot of it required local and chapter 70. Transportation, again, that's a three-year contract that amount stays the same for three years. Will be in the second of a third-year contract in FY '22. And our offsets, again, are grant revenue and school choice, circuit breaker, all the other revolving accounts. That's what consists or makes up the offsets. And this is a big one. So out of our $10.4 million operating budget, 75% of that is for either salary stipends, some type of personnel costs. And the big takeaway from that is, you know, obviously, the 25% that's left for us for supplies and/or services, when we really get into those numbers, which we will, you know, it doesn't leave us a lot of room when cuts need to be made, you know, to take from those discretionary funds. So when cuts need to be made, especially in a year like this, you know, they're most likely going to come from positions. So this is projected expenses by department. And you can see, obviously, East Meadow and the high school are the two biggest, you know, the two biggest pieces of the budget. Obviously, that's where all of the staff are. But East Meadow, you see, you know, for supplies and services, they have $23,500. That's including, you know, any type of supplies, instructional materials, office supplies, anything like that. That's what, you know, we have in the budget for next year, which is really pennies compared to everything else. And at the high school, even less, $18,000. So, you know, when we're tasked with making cuts, it's really, really difficult to, you know, to cut from what I like to call discretionary funds, supplies and services funds, because we just don't have a lot to work with to begin with. Questions, as you guys see the department budgets? Stephanie? Just, I see you looking, so.
Are we doing ours now? Are questions?
I think you walked in a little late, but I did say I'd like to wait till the end unless there was something that you really wanted to.
I heard you. I was on the phone calling in, but I wasn't sure if we were saving ours for our meeting. No, we'll ask all the budget-related questions now. And then I see we already have a couple of hands up for questions from the forum too.
Again, this, the information in the previous slide is just put in chart form here. And again, you can see how staff-heavy, the light blue is for personnel services, salary stipends. So it just, it just shows how staff and how salary-heavy we are. And these are the proposed reductions for FY '22 school year. We saw these a couple of weeks ago, but one administrative assistant, three teacher or instructional positions, and four paraprofessional positions, which totaled $277,617, which then gets us to a projected, you know, proposed deficit of $450,000.
No. Are we going to get any clarity on, you got in your folder?
Yeah. So that might have been a little quick. However, like I said, I just wanted to get through that, because this is not really any new information, but I wanted to leave sufficient time for questions, comments from anybody, either from the school committee or from the community. Yes?
Can we just clarify ESER III?
Yes.
ESER III is in the process of reviewing what the needs are.
Yes.
The application, when is that available?
So the application, they say it's supposed to be available in May, which we're more than halfway through, and it's not available yet.
And then they don't do the final award until October?
I believe the dates that we talked about this morning, I think the deadline to get the application in was around October. So.
So it would not be, we would not be able to use it in FY '22?
We could, we could, we just wouldn't know, you know, we're still a few months out, knowing if we'd be able to use that. But yeah, we would certainly be able to use that in FY '22. But one of the biggest components, or, you know, that comes with ESER III that didn't come with the first two, is that there needs to be a plan in place for these funds developed by all stakeholders in the community. So, school district personnel, teachers, students, school committee, parents, you know, anybody in the community, any stakeholder for this community, there needs to be a plan developed for the use of ESER III funds.
And the original projection that they gave us is just that a projection, that amount could change?
That amount could change, certainly, certainly. I, the projection at this point, it's $634,000 and some change. I don't see it, but for right now, it's a projection, correct? Thank you. Any other questions? I'm not sure how we, Jen, how you want to, if you guys want to ask your questions, or you want to let the public answer some questions, and then you guys, you know, it might address some of your questions.
Well, I think we've had a lot of opportunities to ask some questions. So I think we should go, it is a public forum after all. So I think that looks like the first hand that I see is Rich Demiraki. Go ahead.
Hello?
Hello?
Hi. In today's newspaper, there was an article about the town of Amherst that they're receiving $10 million from the American Rescue Plan, signed by President Biden this March. Is that comparable to what was said for the $600 and some odd thousand dollars for Granby? Or is that completely different?
Yeah, Rich, sorry. So in that, in that, the third, the plan in the American Rescue or American Recovery Plan. So there's allocations that are going to the school districts, and then there's also allocations that are going to the town. So I don't know if that article was referring to what the school department was receiving in Amherst or what the town was receiving in Amherst. Again, to be clear, the school department, based on allocations thus far, is set to receive around $635,000. And I know the town, I believe, is set to receive around $1.8 million. But there, you know, it's two, it's from the same, it's from the same plan, but two separate allocations, one to the school and then one to the town.
Now, is the allocations for the school in your revenue numbers?
So they're not, again, and I had mentioned that early on. They are not, only because we don't know what those, you know, those final numbers are yet. And there is a very strategic plan that needs to go into allocating those funds for the use in the schools. We can certainly end up, as we go through that process, help offsetting our budget a little bit. But we decided, at the beginning of this process, we've been very clear at the beginning, or since the beginning, I've been very clear exactly what the ESER money and the COVID money should be used for. And we were very clear that we did not want to use at least this allocation to offset any of our operational budget for FY '22. However, that certainly can change once we know what final allocations are and once we get all the stakeholders involved and see what they want us to use this money on. But for the ESER III, again, I just want to be very clear, it's a very, it's a very detailed process that we need to follow in order to allocate these funds for the next couple of years.
Okay, now, are all the COVID expenses included in the $10 million of your budget?
Yeah, so, and again, this is one of those questions that we don't really know what school is going to look like in the fall. We're hoping that we're back to, you know, being, you know, full-time with, you know, with no remote, whatever it may, you know, whatever that may look like. But yes, there are, there are COVID, projected COVID expenses in our budget for FY '22 that are being offset with the ESER II funding, which is funding that we already know exactly what that allocation is. That grant application should be coming out hopefully in the next few days, if not week or so. And we will be using the ESER II amount, which is a little less than $300,000, $292,000, to help offset some COVID-related costs for FY '22.
What are you projecting for COVID expenses for '22 that are in your budget now?
So there's a, there's a couple right now. So we have an additional custodian that we're going to use that money for. There are two building-based substitutes, one at each of the buildings that we are going to fund with this money. And there's one, I'm not sure what we're going to call it, but a district-wide substitute nurse funded in there with the COVID money for FY '22.
Do you have a total?
I'm sorry?
Do you have a total dollar amount?
Yeah, so we're going to use the full, it's, right now, it's close to the full amount of that, of that $292,000 of that allocation that we're going to be using to fund for FY '22.
Okay, I'd just like my last comment. It seems unfair that you're including expenses for COVID in your budget, but no revenue for it. So you're asking the town to pay $450,000 to cover your budget when some of the revenue is not included in your budget?
So we, so we are, the, some of the revenue included in there is the ESER II, the $292,000. Yep, I'm going to go to it, Rich, real quick.
Okay.
Yep, so you'll see, Rich, if you, if you're looking at the screen still, so you'll see in this top section where it says grants, there's CARES, ESER at the very last line of $292,000. We're using that amount to help offset our operational budget that includes COVID-related expenses.
Okay, now, okay. Yeah, you didn't really give me a figure what the COVID expenses are, but I guess they're less than $292,000 that you're projecting, aren't they?
Right now, they're around $292,000. Like I said, we're going to use that full allocation. Now, that's an allocation that we're, you know, you can use over two years. September 2023 is when that amount expires. We're using all of FY '22 to help offset the, our budget.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next one, I don't see a last name, but I believe it's Sue. I'm really stretching the limit of my glasses here, ladies. It's a public forum, so you don't have to be a Grandy resident. Hello, Sue, go ahead. If you could just identify yourself by first and last name, that would be great. It appears that you're still muted, though.
Hi, sorry, I'm in the car, and I think I hit the hand-raising thing instead of not hitting it by accident. I don't have a comment. It's Sue Craig. Oh, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, Dina Smith?
Can you hear me?
We can, go ahead.
So I think to maintain complete transparency, I would actually really love to know which three teaching positions are part of your budget cut and which, just so that we can know what grades specifically and what children could be affected by losing these positions. I know that in the past, it was said that these were positions that were not looking, some, you know, were retirees or those that are leaving. But if not filled, of course, they could affect the children in the classroom. So I would love to know which grades those were.
Hold on one second, we'll get that.
So we, we use the attrition of staff to make the determination of positions that were cut. But those aren't necessarily what, if it was a grade one, if it was a grade six, not necessarily going to be those exact positions. The school department or the administration will look at enrollment. They'll look at the budget and student need to determine where those cuts eventually will be.
I just wanted to guess make sure that we have level services for next year. You know, if we do have three classrooms in, say, first grade that we're maintaining those three classrooms in first grade to give the level services to those incoming kindergarters going into first grade. So I'm not sure if that's what grade level you're looking at, but it sounds like three positions are not looking, though. Am I understanding that there could be more teaching positions? If we're thinking for future thought that, you know, grade three currently has three teachers, are we looking to maintain those three teachers for parents that may have students in currently grade two? Or is that up in the air as of right now?
So it's all going to be based on enrollment and on our budget picture on town floor. Right now, we have projected cuts. But if you look at, you know, the slides, we still have a projected deficit of $450,000 in which we'll be going to the town, you know, for support. So right now, until we know the exact enrollment of the grades and the needs of the students and the budget, I think a lot of those decisions will be made after town meeting.
And so I just want to say one thing, too, is that a lot of times our teachers are moved around depending on enrollment anyway. It's not necessarily based on cuts, but, you know, we've had, you know, sixth grade is at two classes this year, but a few years ago, it was at three classes. And fourth grade is at two classes, but next year could be three classes. Just depends upon the ebb and flow of students in or out based on grade. So overall, it's this total number of positions at their current salaries that we will not be replacing at this point. And we're, like Carol said, we're not sure exactly where that will all land, because we have some flexibility to be able to move people around depending upon need to provide those level services.
So Jeff, I just want to make it clear, so level service, this is not level service. So level service would be...
We're not saying we're going to, you know, like, I think with the point she's saying is that we'll have teachers to, at this point, with what we're saying, we have teachers to fill the classes that we have.
Correct.
That's...
Yes, because level service would mean we're not making any position cuts to the budget. But yes, I understand the clarification. Yep, that makes sense. I just want to make sure that was stated.
Thank you.
Welcome. Welcome.
Well, Rich, again.
Yeah, there's no one else, so go ahead, yeah.
What's that?
Rich, again.
Yeah, I had a, uh, on the proposed, proposed reductions of two hundred and seventy-seven thousand, does that, does that bring you down to a deficit of four fifty? If, if the town, if the town gives you the four fifty, will these jobs be saved, or?
No.
No, so, so Rich, thank you, that's a, that's a good question, so no, so in order for us to get to that um, four fifty, uh, we needed to make these reductions um, of the two seventy-seven that you see, so, um, even if, if the town helped out um, with the full four fifty, no, these, these positions would not be um, filled for FY twenty-two.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions from the public? Oh, I think if they raise their hand, they'll pop up to the top. Okay, well, we can give those um, questions and ma- and um, anybody had, I think some people had questions on the committee, so we can go ahead and ask those now, if um, and see if maybe one of our questions sparks some additional questions from the people watching. Anybody?
I think one of the questions that we had, or that I had last week, I think um, you know, Dina Smith had asked as well, was the clarification around the positions, and I know that's a tough one to answer at this point, too, without having a clear picture of what classrooms will look like, of what enrollment will look like. Um, and so for me, that was answered, so, you know, thank you for doing that, and, you know, thanks to, to Dina for asking the question as well. Um, because I would imagine others would have the same thoughts, you know, kind of thinking about next year and what it might look like. Um, I also think it's, it's important to understand, like Jen pointed out, like the, the Esser and CARES Act monies and what that looks like, and trying to think about and get ahead of um, what school might look like for the upcoming year, and what those positions we might need, um, because we've needed them already, and because we want to continue to ensure that schools can stay open, and students are here safely and able to learn, and we're not um, in a position where we're scrambling to meet the ever-changing guidance and guidelines that kind of continue through this year. Um, so I just think it's, you know, it's very wise and kind of prudent to continue to kind of staff those COVID-related positions, um, and, and be thoughtful about that, which was discussed today, too. I think it's a lot of information to digest, and I don't know if more people have more thoughts and questions, but those are just a couple of things that I was thinking about.
Uh, again, the, to the, because I know that the, one of the big questions is that Esser three, the, the COVID might, that allocation that, you know, um, others have said is, would be a secretive about, or, or we're not letting anybody else know, like, like, we've been clear from the beginning that this money i- um, is coming at some point, we're not sure at this point exactly what the dollars and cents look like. Um, and it might come in a month or so that we decide, hey, we want to use some of that money to reinstate these positions. We don't know, right, we, that, that's a conversation that we're going to have, however, um, I'm going to continue to say this, that we, we shouldn't be using that money to help offset our operational budget, because we'll just be in the same place a year from now. Um, it's really not going to help, it'll help us right now, um, but it's not going to help us next year and the next couple of years, and it's a cer- certainly not going to help us when we know there's some improvements that need to be made to both schools, but mostly to the high school, and if we want to bring kids in um, full-time next year, HEPA scrubbers in each room are just not going to cut it, so we need to be using those funds to make updates, make improvements to the high school, so that we can bring in kids and have them learn in a, you know, fairly um, undisruptive uh, atmosphere, but again, um, we've been clear on that from, from the very beginning, um, what those grant monies can be used, um, or not used for. Um, and I'll, you know, I'll continue to, to say the same thing.
And just, I guess, one question that I had too was, has there always been the one fifth kind of delineation that that was?
So for the Esser three, yeah, so, so again, the, the first two were really, we were talking about this this morning, the first two, um, the first two uh, funding cycles were really just to pump schools in and, and get schools money to either bring kids back, or bring teachers back, or get remote technology, whatever it was. This, this round, the Esser three, is really looking to the future and, and what, um, you know, how schools can use this money to help um, address some of the loss for the last year or so. Um, so there are some more stricter guidelines around that, and one of the big things is making sure you have input from all the stakeholders, and there is a, you know, a stake, a stakeholder's proposal that needs to be submitted with the grant application, you know, tying everyone and everything to the, the grant proposal, so yes, the, this round is a little more, um, a little more strict on what they can be used for.
Because my understanding, when I looked at it, that's the minimum amount.
That's, so yes, so that's another thing, right, that's the minimum amount, that we could spend twice that if we wanted to, right, so, but there's a minimum of twenty percent needs to be set aside to help address any loss of learning or um, anything to that nature over the last year.
And we, we have, um, lost my train of thought, um, and so some of what we're using this year's money for the, the nurses and the subs and everything up to that two hundred and ninety-two, is we're using that, are we using that money for this year's summer school, like this summer, summer school, or is that the new?
That would be the three, so, so-
We haven't applied for three yet, and we, so we don't know how much we're getting.
We haven't applied for two yet either, but that application process is out, we'll be doing that application over the next couple of weeks, like that, that process will be started in the several weeks. For Esser three, again, they said the application would be made available sometime in May, we're, you know, halfway through May, hasn't been available, made available yet. I'm assuming that's coming very soon, um, but we, we, in our operational budget, we have summer school built in um, for this summer that, you know, should address, um, or hopefully will address, you know, some of the loss for the last year, but again, you know, for next summer and the summers after that, we can build a, you know, more comprehensive plan, um, using the, the third round of stimulus.
Yeah, was this, that also read and felt different too than your kind of traditional ESY, extended school year, special education, summer.
It's supposed to be very targeted to, you know, but we have to assess that still.
Content standards, and it was due to pandemic, you know, related loss, not due to like, loss of skills, you know, due to disability-related concerns, so, you know, almost in separate lanes. So this would offer, you know, all students almost a different, a different choice.
And again, we're still assessing that, what, what that looks like, right, even, even to put something in for this summer, we don't have all of that information yet, we're, you know, we're still assessing it. And it's, that's an ongoing process as it is, um, obviously just made a little tougher by the last year or so.
Absolutely.
Rich has got another question?
Yes, this is my last question for Adam. I assume most of the COVID expenses have already been incurred for the current year, ending June thirtieth, twenty-one. Now, is the school committee going to be coming to the town? Are they going to have a big deficit for the current year also?
Uh, so Rich, my hope is, is that we don't, uh, certainly not, we're, you know, we're still a couple of months, a month and, month and a half out, um, like, you know, of finishing this school year, um, there were um, some costs incurred due to the pandemic above and beyond um, grant money that we received, um, and examples are um, the building-based substitutes that were in each, um, are in each school, and the sub-nurses that are, are in each school, um, those were um, above and beyond some of the costs, because um, the, those costs were really incurred, like, we kind of scrambled to, to put those pieces in place in order to be able to get kids as many kids back into school as early as possible, um, so, my hope is that, you know, we, we will have some operational savings, especially in um, maintenance of facilities, because the schools were, were closed um, for the most part of the year, so, so my hope is, um, we should be able to cover any deficit that we may have due to, um, you know, extra COVID-related costs that really were, were out of our, um, out of our control.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome, and you can ask as many questions as you like.
Okay, what about school lunch program?
So, so honestly, and I, I've, um, I think I said this a couple of weeks ago, or the, the waiver was a couple of weeks ago, so, um, they extended um, free lunch to um, all kids through the end of next year, so all of next school year will be um, free lunch for um, for all districts. How that's going to look, um, it, it will certainly look a little different for us, um, but we are, um, actually, we're meeting either this week or next week to talk about how it's going to look for the summer, um, and then we'll certainly set up a plan on how that's going to look for the next school year, but, um, they did extend that waiver, and, and all meals are free for uh, students next year as well.
Okay, thank you.
Can we use the opportunity of that being brought up, well, there's plenty of viewers to also share that we talked about, that we had money that came up from that, but at the same time, that money is not worth money to the people.
Yeah, so, just that's a, yeah, that's a good point, so we, we were, um, and I, I've said this from the, I feel like I gotta say everything that I said from the start, because I feel like sometimes our words get um, twisted um, in different ways, but, um, one of the fortunate things from the pandemic was the free meals, and we were able and are able to generate um, a lot of revenue this year from that, um, so, so, um, we will have um, a pretty good chunk of change in the school lunch revolving account, however, there are very strict guidelines on how that money can be used, and as much as I'd love to use some of that to offset um, some of either FY twenty-one's budget or FY twenty-two's budget, we can't, it's, it, there's some very strict guidelines as to how we use that money, however, um, we are planning on making some upgrades, updates to the kitchen, um, which would be well within the use of those funds, so, um, I'm not saying we're not using them at all, but, you know, we'll, we'll use them where, where we can.
And the other kind I want to make is, because they're free lunches, we're unsure of what the actual lunch wants, we start getting back into a normal. So at this point, we don't know what those actual costs are going to be, and I'd rather have something sitting there so that we have something available if it goes over what we projected.
Yep, yeah, and that's, that's another good point, so, you know, we, again, we've been able to turn a pretty good um, profit this year, um, I, I'm assuming we will be able to turn a pretty good profit next year as well. However, um, Charles Wells may have to add an additional staff, because now we have more kids in school, so there will be some, some costs that, um, additional costs that we may incur, but, um, a- and that's a good point, but we have generated a, a good amount of revenue in school lunch revolving this year um, because of the waiver, so, and that will continue through next school year. Compared to past years, yep.
Yeah, so I'd like to define pretty good um, profit, because I think that's sometimes where people think we're hiding money, the past couple of years, we've been running in the red for the lunch program. And so this time, we're making a pro- pro- um, profit, but it's not like it's a hundred thousand dollars.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, so just to clarify, it's, is it, it's less than twenty, right?
Uh, no, it's, it's, it's more than that, and I can give an update, um, that's in next, I hope it's not next week, in two weeks' meeting, you'll get your financial report for FY twenty-one. Um, and I will, I will share those numbers, um, but it's, it's, it's not a hundred thousand dollars, but it's more than twenty thousand dollars, maybe somewhere in, in the middle.
Yeah, so we'll have an update on that, but I just don't want that to be out there, that's like, oh, we turned a really good profit, but we're not using it, so.
Yeah, well, I think, I think that's why it's just, it's a good point by Audrey, like, we need to be clear right now, and I, and I understand your point. Yep, we, we do, we've, we've returned a profit, and, and there's only certain things we can use it on, and, and we will certainly fund those things um, that we can use it on when, when we have the opportunity.
Excellent, I appreciate that uh, question, Audrey, a lot, because I think that's one of those things that hangs out there. Okay, uh, Dina.
So, thank you, I, um, I think that one thing that you all are great at doing, and I think that we all need to advocate, is to getting families more at these town meetings, because the four hundred thousand plus deficit in asking the town draws concern as, you know, the town has squabbled over lesser amounts, and there's been arguments over the years for even just less amounts in better economic years. Um, but one big thing that also needs to be conveyed to family or to people and taxpayers outside of the school district at, is that children really have suffered through this pandemic, not just um, physically, mentally, socially, but academically, and I think it's a personal thought, but many students could be struggling to be where they're supposed to be, and, you know, I always think about teachers and cutting teachers, it's not something that we want to hear, um, especially this year, where it's going to take a lot to identify students that may be not where they're supposed to be, and having work with them to catch them up to where they need to be, so it's always a concern to think about that if the town does not provide these funds, that additional teachers will need to be cut, because it is a larger expense on the um, budget. So that was just a comment that I had.
Thank you, Dina, we, uh, appreciate that comment, and it's, uh, it's a hundred percent spot on.
Yes, but can I just clarify that we said even if the town does give the four hundred items to scrap, those, these proposed reductions are not a part of that four hundred thousand dollars. But even if we do hopefully get that help from the town, that's not going to change, unfortunately, this proposed reduction. I think that's a misconception, I just want to keep kind of reiterating throughout this process.
I lied, I lied, I'm back. Okay, first of all, the four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, most taxpayers know that the school committee gets a total of between ten and, ten and twelve million dollars of revenue. You're, and you're asking for four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, most taxpayers see a big funnel where that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars goes somewheres, and it, and it's spent somehow in part of your budget. I think if you showed taxpayers specifically what that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars would be used for, you would have a better chance of getting it, instead of just saying we need four hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
So if I understand your question, Rich, and, and thank you for it, um, you're, you're wondering with that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars, what we're going to use it for?
Right.
We, we wouldn't be using it for anything, it would be to, it would, it would help us fund our budget exactly as it stands right now, so it's not like we're asking for an additional four hundred and fifty thousand dollars to add things, we're, we're asking for that just to be able to operate as is as the budget stands in front of us right now.
Yeah, I'm not saying you're adding four hundred and fifty thousand, I'm saying if you show taxpayers where you're going to spend that four hundred and fifty thousand, you, you'd have a better chance of getting it.
So what I think he's trying to say, and that's actually where I was kind of at, is where, when I was having my turn, is that if we, the town does not give us that four hundred and fifty thousand, what are our?
Okay.
Like, it's going to be a cut of this position, or this position, and this position, if we don't get that one day. So I think that's where, like, that, I almost kind of wish I had kind of said that, like, if we don't get that, what are our projected cuts? Because I have written on here too, like, I think so, people, just in case, what is the timeframe to do stuff like that, like, I have-
I did ask that last time, and we said we weren't going to get into it until we knew where we stood with the town, so, it's kind of, it's like a chicken and the eggs.
There's a timeframe, like, where I come from, you can only do it from a certain time, so sometimes there'll be years that they pink slip a bunch of people, and then they cross their fingers and tie it to the back, so, you know, these are things we do need to think about right now, unfortunately.
So I think our deadline is June first, is that correct?
Correct, I believe this the contractual obligation.
And I, I also wonder if it, town, town meetings aren't from June fifth.
Well, it's it's June first um, for professional status pe- teachers. I think new, you know, first year, under three years, I, I believe it can be, it's later.
And I'm not, please know that I'm not saying that that's the route I want to go, but I feel like that's kind of where he's aiming at that, you know,
Right, exactly, right.
Think that that is important as well.
We, we also, you know, um, stayed away from athletics, you know, because we're, you know, asked not to, you know, go there, we didn't go to the arts, we didn't, you know.
Yeah, yeah, I think if, 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 and, and, and Rich, thank you for the question, Audrey, I appreciate you for asking it a different way, um, uh, uh, you know, that four hundred and fifty, if, if we don't get, you know, all, any, some of it, um, we're gonna, you know, the goal is to stay oh, far, as far- we're gonna, you know, the goal is to stay as far away from the classroom as possible. Unfortunately, as we've seen in the last at least few years that I've been here, the number one thing is athletics, right? Like, you know, that's, that's the, that's the elephant in the room is that's the biggest, the biggest chunk of money when we need it, that we cut. And we hope we garner enough support from the families in town that they come to town meeting floor and say, we're not cutting athletics. So yes, I understand, yep, yep, you know. And I'm hoping we will have some sense before June 1st or June 5th that we will have some support from the town. That, that's my hope, I'm not sure if that'll play out that way.
My follow-up question is, I'll be saying right now to whoever is listening, that that's potentially our route. If we don't get it, it's athletic, even though that's not what we want to do.
I mean, our.
Like, we, I feel like we do need to get that message out there.
Right, I mean, if we, if we, if they only give us a hundred thousand dollars for 450, we're going to have to go back to the budget and, you know, see where it's, you know, we're going to take.
Well, what the, what the point is though, is that we're, we're in a bit of a vicious cycle right now. So our town meeting is June 5th, we need to notify people by June 1. It's May 18th. So we still, I mean, we're, we're sending letters, we're doing things, we're pleading our case, but we don't even get to have this discussion on town floor until June 5th. So, I mean, we can't do it right now. Obviously, we're not going to start crunching numbers, but I.
Yeah, I, I don't know.
But I, I agree that, you know, that's, it didn't, I didn't register with me, but I know that that's where I was at before. But one of the things that we, I said, and I'm the one that was kind of being firm on this, is if we continue to go after the things that are the, the only extras we have left, we're not going to have students to try to make a budget for. So I was really firm about not going after the arts and athletics because those are the few programs that we have left that are a little bit of extra. I'm not saying that we might not have to go through every line item in every part of the budget and say, okay, no new uniforms or no new instruments or, 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 or. Like, you know, I think we're going to have to be like a Rob Peter to pay Paul sort of a thing. And it's going to be, how can we maintain what we have without trying, without really drastically impacting the direct face to get. But anything at this point, anything that we do that's a cut, is it, has an impact to one student or another or several or all of them.
What's wrong with athletics?
Even if it's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah, even if we do, it does not solve the issue. It doesn't, I mean, it's really nothing.
I feel like that's always the spot where we'll end up leaving here to go to another district.
And we're going to start paying more of a school choice out or charter school out.
Yeah, yeah, and even still, the athletics doesn't make up enough of the budget. It's covered. Those, that deficit, it not, not even close.
Well, and just another thing too, to be talking, I feel like we keep talking kind of pink slip or teachers. There's other staff members too that of course, like, we, you know, we'll have to evaluate. It's not necessarily just a classroom teacher. Like, we're going to have to take a big look at all of our personnel and see where we're at and what would impact our families, our students the least academically. I don't want to just assume that it's going to be, you know.
Well, that's why we try to do it with efficient.
Right, right.
Because that way there, we're, we're not paying unemployment. We're not, you know, you're, you know, people are leaving. And that's, you know, basically, we looked at a chunk of money. We said, okay, these people are leaving, that adds up to this. These people are retiring, it adds up to this. It's not going to cause, cost the district anymore because if we're not pink slipping them and having them, you know, on unemployment, you know. But basically, then we have to reorganize in the school to make sure we're covering students' needs.
So while we're on this discussion, because I can't help it either, sorry, I've been trying. If, when I look at this and I start looking at our year-by-year compared to which we've had budget deficits in the past that we've obviously been able to figure out or whatever else, that this is obviously a trend that's not going to stop. So then at what point, how do we bring ourselves in back to a place where, you know, like, so I'm trying to think, and I'm trying to take one year at a time, but like, you know, what are decisions that we need to look at to make that can go forward with?
So here's a problem that Granby has that most other schools don't, there are some that do. We basically run on academic programs. There are no real extracurricular programs that students can have. So a lot of districts, when they have all these other programs within their schools, they have the ability to cut some of those programs. We don't have that. So it makes it difficult for us when alls we're doing is trying to maintain our students academically, provide them the information that they need to keep advancing forward. But we can't even keep up with other districts through technology because we struggle just to keep our staff. So it's kind of hard to say how can we fix something when any adjustment we make affects the classroom.
I think what Audrey's saying is, press me if I'm wrong, but I think what you're saying is, how do we get to the point where we build our budget so that we're, we're not at a gap?
Well, I mean, what needs to happen is the town has to invest in the schools. Okay, we showed the slide, and I don't know if Adam has the slide. But if you look at area communities, they provide a present, a percent above net school spending. And Granby provides point, less than 1% above net school spending.
And that went from 2018, so we'd be even less than that now.
Yeah, because. And it's where the, the, you know, the issue rises, you're right. Costs are going to continue to go up, salaries are going to continue to go up. You know, but unless we're going to have an increased enrollment to get chapter 70 or more school choice, you know, the, the money's not there. We're going to talk about, you know, school choice later. But, you know, we're one of, there's only two area districts around us. Us in, in Holyoke, in Holyoke does 0.9, Granby does 0.2%. Other districts are as high as 49% over net school spending. So.
I think the tough thing is, and I brought this up last week too, kind of what, to go back to what Audrey was saying though, is unfortunately, and I hate the cycle that we're in and that there isn't more coming from the town by also. Understand that unfortunately, unlike almost every other town around, we really are, our taxes are funded by just our taxpayers. We don't have the revenue, it is a vicious cycle. I'm not saying I want to take from the police or fire to move to the school. We're in a really tough spot because it's not like there's a lot of extra within the town. Our town isn't doing great financially. So to kind of, I do understand where Audrey was saying to work within what we do have because this is setting up to the same issue next year. And I don't foresee, I hope we can get in a spot where we can get more from the town, but that's going to take time, it's not going to happen for next year's budget. I would be shocked, I'd be thrilled, but I'd be shocked. So I do understand, like, having to kind of think that ahead that if we go out for 450 this year, being in the same boat next year is a very scary thought.
Yeah, and, you know, some of the responsibility falls on, you know, us as the schools. You know, we need to do a better job educating our families and stakeholders of exactly what goes on in the schools. And I've said this plenty of times, and, and I mean it. And, you know, Carol was only here for a year, and that year was fully engulfed in COVID emergency response efforts, right? There, there was, there was no other focus other than getting kids back in school, getting kids instructional, whatever it was, it was COVID emergency response related. You know, moving forward with, you know, hopefully, once Stephen comes on officially and we get to move forward, we've already talked about it, him and I have had conversations, the leadership teams have had conversations, like inviting people into the school and saying, you know, walk through East Meadow, see what we're doing in our classrooms, walk through the high school. Because the talk is, do we need to have kids at the high school? Let's regionalize, let's, let's do all these things that, that we're, we're going to save money. But we don't know what's going on in your schools for us to actually make an educated decision, right? Part of that's our responsibility, part of the, part of, part of our jobs going forward should be to, again, have a coffee time with the senior citizens, have a coffee time with parents, have a, do some activities that are engaging the public, that are, you know, and showing them what's going on in the schools so that when we come to a year where there's a $450,000 deficit, a $100,000 deficit, whatever it may be, parents know, hey, the schools need the money. Like, and we're going to go to town floor and we're going to say, I don't care what you guys do, cut another department, police, fire, whatever it is. But the, the schools need that money because this is how we've asked our schools to operate. And now we've seen how our schools are operating. And what we're asking of them is not, you know, they're not capable of doing it right now, and they need this money. So a lot of it's on us, you know, we, we need to take responsibility in educating everybody else in the town exactly what's going on, you know, in the, in the schools on a day-to-day basis. And hopefully, I think with the, you know, Stephen coming on, we're, we're certainly going to do that. But yes, this is a concern, and, and, you know, I said it for the last couple of years, like, we were able to, you know, use some excess funds in school choice and circuit breaker to help offset even more, the deficit even more than it was and not go to town meeting floor. But I was very clear in saying, we're not going to be able to sustain this. There are going to, there's going to come a time, if they, you know, if we keep getting reduced funding, we're not going to be able to maintain this pace. And unfortunately, you know, we're here this year because we couldn't maintain that pace.
That's one thing I just want to pick up on and point out is we, we had started to build up those revolving accounts, right? For a circuit breaker and chapter 70 because we had, we had school choice in the right way. We had more students coming in than going out. And we had the increase with having the special education program that we have. So we were getting more money in for those students. So there was, you know, I think that that's where people think we have all this, like, money buckets hidden in the walls and we're like squirrels just kind of hiding it away. But that money for the last two years, if we didn't have that, we would have been going back to town floor year after year after year. And so that's one of the things that I think we've almost done ourselves a bit of a disservice because we had the money that we weren't going back because we were trying to get ourselves on our feet. And so people are like, well, why can't you just do with what you had? But now we've used those reserves up on top of having a COVID year, on top of having a bunch of people, a bunch of students and families leave and choose other schooling options. It's kind of like the perfect storm. Plus, we had, you know, increased, other increased fees and everything that COVID, our COVID grants aren't covering 100% of, you know. So it's one of those things where even me living and breathing this, it wasn't until you just said that, that it was kind of that aha moment, like, oh my gosh, we were doing this and we were setting ourselves up. And then the, the, the floor fell out because of, you know, we, we haven't been able to sustain that. So that's one of those things that if we hadn't been doing what we were doing last year, we would have been on town floor asking for money. And the year before that, we would have been asking for money. And it's just like we've been saying, we don't have industry, we don't have the tax revenue from other places. And unfortunately, it's, it's on all of us that are townspeople that we have, we haven't, we're, we can't rely on the fact that we don't have the dump anymore as the reason that we don't have money in the town. So it's time to, we all have to start doing our, doing our part in a different way, I guess.
And the thing is.
We don't want the tax increase, let's just be.
We want to keep our students here so that that doesn't happen.
Right.
Because if, that's my whole thing too, is keeping our students here that live here. Because what's going to happen is if we don't keep them here, those people are going to move. And then will those houses sell to someone else who doesn't have a family? I mean, it's, it's a cycle that if we can stop it before it happens, instead of being reactive to everything.
Okay, well, it's 6:42, we started a few minutes late, so we're ending a few minutes late. But I just want to give one last chance, if there's anybody that's on, on the actual Zoom call that has any questions. And then do I have to close this meeting and then open the other school committee meeting? Oh, we have a question, I think that says Michelle. Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Michelle, and please identify yourself first and last name.
Hi, it's Michelle Simpson, and can you hear me?
You sure can, thank you.
Okay, great, so yes, I've been listening to the meeting, and you know, I agree, it's a perfect storm. And you're in between a rock and a hard place because this whole thing is all about the budget and school choice. Because school choice is the all and end all with the schools. If you don't have students coming in with school choice, you don't have the extra funds coming in. But when you don't have the school open and students' choice out, well, then you're spending more money for those students to go out. Is there any way that we can just point that to the town and be like, we need to keep our students here in Granby? Like, it's really not a question of to, for you to determine what the budget is, but just get that information out as we need our students to stay here. If you cut programs, if you cut teachers, if you cut anything, people are going to continue to choice out because they're going to get better service elsewhere.
So I was just. The one thing that I can say is the way it's going to happen is with people like you coming to town floor, being vocal, spreading the word and helping us out. Because we're only five people on a committee, and so we need people to understand that. And I think that that's how we're going to get that word out, and I cut you off, Audrey, go ahead.
No, you didn't cut me off. I, while she was talking too, I started to think a little bit of like, you know, before we get to here, you know, we need residents other than the five of us to show up to select board meetings, to show up to finance committee meetings, to share with them that their values are within the schools and that, you know, that's how everyone likes money allocated as well, right?
Right.
I mean, is that like the process here? And I feel like, Adam, when you were sharing about how, you know, we really need to bring people in and, and, you know, share with them what's kind of going on, I also feel that there would be a value in educating everyone on how to advocate for what they need in town and for what they want the schools to have or, or different concerns that they have. And I, that's something even I question, you know, I'll take a trip to Ukraine, park with them, I'm like, you know, who do I talk to about, but I'm like, I can't always be that person as much as I'd love to be. Everyone's going to just love me.
I love you.
Who is the reach out person? And I feel like that's something I'm hoping as a town going forward. I did reach out to a few people here and there about this meeting that I was, you know, trying to spread that word and let people know. Because we all should be kind of asking questions. And I know we're busy, you know, my husband had all three and he was at a sports event today. We were trying to run out the door at the same time. But I feel like we really need to start there even, you know. As in many families that we have showing up to, you know, share their feelings and views here, we need that at those meetings as well.
And I, and I tried making that point a few months ago when the whole petition went around to get kids. And, and obviously it didn't go over well, and I might have said it the wrong way. I, I found that out very quickly. My point was there was that, you know, there's always like a one-off as to where we get parent support, right? We need that parent support throughout the year, good and bad, right? Like, be on, be on public comment for three minutes and berate us if you want to. But you might want to be on the next week if you have something good to say about us too. And then we need all of that, you know, they got over 300 signatures, whatever it may be, right? Because they wanted kids back in school, awesome. I, I, I wasn't downplaying the, the enormity of that. My point was like, we need that all the time, like, we need as much help as we can get. Like, we need 300 parents at town meeting floor on June 5th saying, the schools can't operate like this, like, they need this additional funding. That, that's, that's what we need, you know, this community to come together and do a good. And again, I'll be very clear, also tell us when we're doing things bad. I think that, that, that's a healthy, that's a healthy relationship. And, you know, it, it starts with us educating them more on exactly what we are doing. But it's only because we need them, you know, we need them to advocate for us in a year exactly like this one.
Michelle, we kind of stepped on you there, did you have anything else that you wanted to say? Michelle, we kind of stepped on you there. Did you have anything else that you wanted to say?
I do.
Sorry about that.
No, that's, that's quite right. Cause this is what I, I was hoping to hear. But the one thing that I, I need you guys to take away as a school committee is that, the parents did make a point with all the surveys that 90% of the parents wanted the kids back in school. And the parents feel like now they're not listened to by the school committee because the kids did not go back to school. So I just want to be like, okay, so you want to listen to the parents, but you're still making your own decisions.
I'm gonna, I'm just gonna.
I can just leave it at that.
No, no. And I, this is healthy discussion and it's, it's time well spent. But one of the things is with the way open meeting law works and the way things are, there was so much that was going on behind the scenes that we are not at liberty to discuss in an open forum. And I can tell you that we had five moms sitting on this panel that wanted their kids to go back to school as well. But we can't say, we can't just come out and say that because there's other forces that are at work. There was, there was, there was a lot. You know, there was many, many factors. There's lots of different parties and we can't name them all and we can't call them out. And everything is protected. So we can't talk about hours spent here and there and everywhere. And so it was heartbreaking for me to sit there and to listen to 45 people come through and tell me that I'm doing a crappy job because we're not getting the kids to school. And that my ladies here, as we're sitting here, that we're not being forceful enough. But it's not just our decision. And that was the hardest thing. And it's still the hardest thing for me to, because there's not an easy explanation. So we were working on it and we were doing it and we did finally get the kids back to school. And we tried to do it in a quicker timeframe than what was outlined to us by the state. And it was heart wrenching for me to have to look my friends in the eye that I couldn't help them get their kids back to school sooner because it was what I wanted to. And you know, I, I could sit here ad nauseam and tell you about the things that we tried to do and the different ways we tried to accomplish things, but it wasn't just us. And, and that's where it's unfortunate. Um, and we weren't making decisions in a vacuum. And so that we, I think I can say for all of us, we really do want this input, but just because we get the input does not then guarantee that we can give you exactly what you ask for. As much as we might like to. And I don't know if that makes us sound like overs or if that makes us sound unreasonable. But unfortunately, it's just like, there's more that, more that's happening. Someone help me out.
Yeah, it's, it has been stated every time that someone makes a comment that we cannot comment back. We can listen and maybe at the next meeting make, um, a comment back, like give feedback. But most of the time when we're looking for public comments, it's feedback to us to know how we're doing and where we need to make those changes.
I also think even with all of this going on, the amount that happened behind the scenes, the collaboration that happened with the town, with Board of Health, with other committees and us, we, you know, we didn't do it as quick as maybe everyone would like to, but we did it knock on wood, uh, very safely. We kept kids in, we got them in and they got, they were able to stay in. And that was a huge concern and lots of other districts were not as fortunate and did a lot more closing of classrooms. I think we've done a pretty darn good job keeping students in, keeping our staff safe, everyone safe. And we actually did it quicker than it was lined out. And it was definitely not an easy task. Like Jen just said, there's so many pieces involved. And I hope people, you know, kind of grasp the gravity of that whole scenario and how hard everyone did try. And like I said, how, you know, thankful I am that we were able to get everyone in and keep it that way. So I guess I'm going to get off that soapbox.
One, one last thing I, I would like, um, Adam, just to kind of go through, we're on this three-year budget comparison. And, um, I've had people ask me what in-kind contribution, what does that mean? And what, what's in there, you know, that the town is giving us? So is, can you
Sure.
provide us some information?
Yeah. Um, so this slide, hopefully.
Before we do that, Michelle is still on. Um, I just, you know, I kind of went on a soapbox, a little bit of a tirade. And, um, so I just want to make sure that we've acknowledged her questions and make sure that if there were anybody else's questions that we give them that moment before we switch, uh, to yours. So let's hold on to that for just a moment.
Yeah, yes.
No, I'm good. It's just I, I'm all for the transparency and that you're fighting for the kids and I, I love it. But yeah, no, I'm all set. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks, Michelle. So I just, I wanted an opportunity for Adam to kind of just talk about these in-kind costs and what that means. So.
Yep. So, um, I apologize for jumping around slides because it's a couple of places. So, um, you'll see, um, the fifth line down is that $10.7 million. It's a sum of the, the chapter 70 revenue, our required local contribution, um, the additional town allocation and the transportation article. That $10.7 million is all revenue either, um, coming from the state, you know, through the town to us or, um, the additional town allocation or transportation. That adds up to 10.754. Then that very next line, you see town in-kind contribution, which is 2.56 million dollars. And you see that is, that reduces that, that $10.7 million. What that includes is, um, services. Um, and, and we can, we can get into whether they're called services or not, services that the town, um, charges back to the school department and reduces their budget by. Um, so administrative services. So, um, these are a percentage of, um, town positions. We are charged a percentage of town positions um, for them to process our payrolls for us, for them to process our warrants for us. Um, we are charged a percentage for maintenance of operations for, um, the town mowing. Um, and I don't want to get into it, but most of our fields and grass, um, here at the high school, um, providing us sand and salt through the winter time. Um, street sweeping our parking lots in the springtime after the winter. So we're, we're charged um, percentages of those costs, um, back to us, which then reduces our, um, our budget or the allocation that the town is going to give to us. The next two sections are the, are the biggest drivers of the in-kind. Um, and I just want to be clear. So one is employee retirement and the other is employee insurance. So obviously retirement of school department employees and insurance for school department employees. Um, over the last few years, there's been a huge jump. So from FY20 to FY21, almost $250,000. And then from FY21 to FY22, projected about $140,000 or so. My numbers could be off, but, um, huge jumps. To be clear, in net school spending, employee retirement and insurance are included in that number. So when the state says, you know, here's your chapter 70 and here's your required local contribution, that number together is our net school spending number, which is the bare minimum a school department should spend on educating their students. Included in that number is employee retirement and employee insurance. So our discussion has always been, we've always acknowledged that that is included in our net school spending and, and the percentage that we get above net school spending. However, our side of it is that those don't directly go to the operational costs of the district, right? So that's the conversation we're trying to have around all these. Um, but these, those are the two, uh, biggest drivers. And then the last one, school choice charter. These are tuitions for either, um, kids' school choicing out or kids attending charter schools. So, um, the town is obviously charged that amount and then that charge comes back to the school department. So, um, that's kind of a quick synopsis of what in-kind is. Um, it's, it's charges on a percentage basis that, um, the town, um, you know, charges the school department back, which reduces the amount of, uh, money they allocate to us on a yearly basis.
So one question that I have looking at this, uh, just, it's my question, but I think other people might have it. Are there suddenly a lot more people in this group for retirements and insurance that is raising the cost? Or is it just the overall cost? That because everything is more expensive?
Yeah, I think it's a, I think it's a combination of both. However, I think the biggest part of that is just the rising costs, um, in, in healthcare. But yes, I think, I think it's a combination of increased, um, participation, but also in, increased, um, costs for these plans.
And is the employee insurance something that the town of Granby chooses? Or is it something that our union negotiates and then comes back to the town and says, this is how much?
So we are, we are part of a, um, uh, not a consortium. Um, I don't know the word, but we are part of a, of a insurance group essentially, um, which drives.
Hampton County.
Yeah, uh, the county, the county insurance which drives these, um, which drives these numbers.
Okay.
So. The understanding is that on the required local, five million to help us run our operations, we are now taking out 2.5 million, which reduces and now, uh, a 10 million budget, now we have only cash of eight million to operate that 10 million budget.
Correct.
Because technically it's shared expenses.
Correct. Yep. Yep. So thank you for Carol asking that. Um, Jen, thank you for clarifying that. Any other, you know, questions around that? It was kind of a high level. Um, but we can certainly at another point get into the details that, you know, that these are, um, I, I've certainly had this question from my, when I first started on how in-kind was generated and, and what went into it. Um, you know, how the allocations were, were developed. Um, just so, so when questions like this came up, we had an understanding of exactly what, what went into these numbers. Um, but no, we, we haven't, I haven't gotten, um, we haven't gotten that detail on how these numbers are, are calculated other than the sheet that the town sends us, um, each spring for us to include in the budget. Um, and, and that's what we're, you know, that's what we, that's what we use. Any more questions?
I, I have one last question.
Sure.
And it's one I haven't actually asked before. So I guess staring at these numbers, something like, starting to make me go crazy. So every year, 2021 and 22 fiscal year, there's always a, there's always a school, town school funding gap. But in 20 and 21, we didn't have to go back to town to ask for additional money. So I know we just said that we had some money in those revolving accounts that we used to offset. But what was, why so different? Like it's a million dollars, almost a million dollars or whatever it is, so much higher this year, 21 to 22. And then it was like 300 plus thousand for 20 to 21.
So, um, just the, you know, the.
Just high level.
Yeah, high level is, you know, um, a, a reduction in about a hundred and $30,000 from 21 to 22 in the required local contribution.
And that's directed by the state.
Yeah, that's a formula driven. Yep. Formula driven by the state. Correct. Um, uh, and, and I want to be clear and again, I keep saying this, but I have to. Last year at this time, when COVID, you know, we didn't know anything. There were so many unknowns about COVID. This 5.256 number was the preliminary number that came out from Governor Baker's budget where Chris agreed, because there were so many unknowns. He agreed to fund us at this amount. As the year went on and, and the state updated their revenues and all, and all that, the adjusted number came out to closer to this. I think it was 5.126. Okay. So in, in, in the town's defense, they, I'm not going to say overfunded us, but they funded us more than, um, the formula ended up being for last year. However, this is what we're comparing it to. So you see about a hundred and $30,000 reduction there, a hundred thousand dollar reduction in that 305 override. Uh, an increase to in crime by a hundred and $30,000. Before, you know, we made our cuts, we had a, a little over 1% increase to our operating budget, right? So all of those added up are driving, you know, this, this deficit.
Thanks. I'm just looking at it, trying to think of other questions people might have as well.
But I did ask it, but I'm not to kind of dive into a little bit.
It's just, so just, I want to say this before I forget. Again, the, the, in our revenue picture, it's all projected, right? Those revenues, that, that's changing, you know, especially at this point, especially with school choice right now. We don't know what school choice is going to look like next week or a month from now, right? Like our, our revenue could increase. Our revenue could decrease, right? So these are kind of a snapshot in time of what those projections, you know, what we're projecting at that point. But these numbers are, especially this time of year, are very, very fluid. And I just want to make sure people where these are, these are projections. Don't hold us to some of the numbers that are in this presentation because they, they certainly will change. Sorry, Audrey.
No, that's okay. But now that you said that, that's probably what, when would we know these more members more clear, I guess?
I mean, the school choice, that's a, that's a ongoing, you know, there, there's, you know, we, we know our, our, our preliminary school choice allocation based on numbers that we submitted in, um, March, right? So they, they base our number on that. There's going to be reconciliation periods, at least for school choice, a couple of times through the year. And they may adjust our allocation based on that. Could be more, it could be less, right? We, we don't know that, you know, we're, we do know that because we're tracking them. But again, it's another number that's a snapshot in time that drives another formula that we, I don't want to say don't have control over, we just don't know at that, at that certain point. So that's just an example of, of school choice. Circuit breaker, the, the projection I'm putting in now is the, is just level funding what we got in revenue for last year. We're in the process of filling out the circuit breaker, um, spreadsheet. We'll know that amount in the next month or so, I believe, where we usually get that. So that number could be more, it, it could be less, but projection wise, you know, I'm using what we got this year as a pretty conservative projection.
So my actual.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I knew you had another one.
Was, um, and I had, I guess I had sent it to you previously was, because again, we're at this point now where we're saying that we are going to be reaching out to the town because we have this deficit. But, um, in the last two years, correct, this year and last year, there was money allocated to us for transportation that we did give back to the town.
Correct. So last year in F, so FY20 leftover transportation, um, we gave back just over $190,000 to the town.
Okay.
This year, um, I would say we're approximately around that same, that same number. We, we would, we would have a surplus that we would be returning to, um, the town.
Which we found that out.
So.
Right. And I know this is money that we would give back to them. It's not like they pictures flip it. But there's a process.
No, certainly there's. Mm-hmm.
Kind of in a holding.
Mm-hmm.
But I feel like that's something to kind of keep in mind that it was money they had previously allocated to us already and we've given it back.
Mm-hmm. That just, just based on finance law, that money goes back and is certified as free cash for that year. You know, then they can allocate it based on some other, um, guidelines, but that money returns to, to free cash. Yep. So last year was, uh, a little over $190,000. I would say this year, uh, around give or take a few, but we will certainly be sending money back to the town, um, for surplus transportation funds this year. And because, you know, we, we, we had limited, um, limited athletic buses or athletics. So we didn't use their buses. I, we may be using a few, uh, here and there now for spring, spring sports. Um, school was not open for most of the, the year. Um, and even when it was, we weren't using the buses to the full capacity. The only allotment that we, um, the only transportation that we are going to spend, um, what, you know, was budgeted in that number is special education transportation. Cause we were still transporting our added district kids um, for most of the school year. So that, that cost, um.
Make sure you clarify that though. It's not like our, our, our district kids of school choice. We don't.
Yes, special education, special education transportation. I'll leave it at that. Special education transportation. Because we were, we were transporting them all year. There's no savings there. But for regular ed and athletics, there's going to be a surplus there that we will be, um, given back to the town.
I can't help myself. So, and, and just to be clear too, again, to be honest, when it comes to special education transportation, that is traditionally paid for by there.
So that's in, that is, that's in. So that's in, that is, that's included in the eight hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars.
So I, I, I want to make sure it's also.
Yep, it's all encompassing, regular ed, special ed, and athletic transportation, or extracurricular transportation.
But their district does cover transportations like that too, right? Where they send them.
With the school choice.
Thank you.
Yes.
Um, right, yes, special education, school.
She's talking about the school.
School choice.
It's a student that choices in.
School choice is totally separate, like they're, yep, totally separate. I'm talking, yeah, I'm talking to these specifically our kids that need.
Money that we're using goes.
No, 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 these are, these are, these are regular education transportation. So our kids in town getting to school, our special education students that we are transporting, you know, for added district placements, but they're our kids and then athletics, that's what makes up that, that amount.
Okay, thank you.
Resident students.
Resident. Ending of them.
I think you guys can pretend. Okay, so do I end the public forum and go into the, do I have to call it all to order? It's the same link and everything, right, for everybody?
Yeah, we're gonna hang it up.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. So the time is uh, seven oh eight, and we're going to now bring the regular session of the school committee to order. Uh, first order of business is the consent agenda. Has everyone had a chance to look at it? Um, can I have a motion for the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from May fourth, twenty twenty-one.
Can I, any, can I have any discussion, any discussion or anything else?
Yes.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor? I pass unanimously. The next is a technology donation, there is an item in our folder. Um, does someone wanna? Go, uh, just all of the stuff, but um, is David here?
Oh, right here.
Oh, sorry, I didn't see you back there.
So this is an organization that has been very generous with us uh, to, over the years, and they again, uh, made a lot of, was available to us, which I picked up last week in Connecticut. And those will be, uh, right now, our plan is, is to rebuild uh, room one ten next year. So I will be using those during the summer to improve that uh, computer lab at the high school. And the technology admin committee is currently looking at where else in the high school we will need uh, deployment of some of these devices, so we'll find other places to reduce those um, as well. And if you take a look at the uh, sheets and the attachment, you know, the, the value, the amount of money that this organization paid for these things, they pawned, it's quite significant, they were asked, and so, so they were very generous. And um, as I was leaving, they said, we'll be in touch with us more stuff in the future, so.
Sounds great.
Great, so once again, I'm, I'm grateful, I'm sure everyone else is, thank you.
Just wanna, first, obviously, David, thank you, you know, we've talked about this numerous ti- numerous times. But again, I just want to emphasize the example of, you know, we are trying our best to reduce costs and, and not include these types of things in our budget. Would we love to, to equip room one ten with all brand new desktop computers that we know are efficient? We know they're fast, we know they're, you know, all these specs that we're not gonna have problems with, of course. Do we also know it's gonna come at a, at a significant cost? Of course, so, you know, with the help of, of David and, and the, you know, the, the relationships that he's established, like these donated, um, this donated equipment really helps us out, like it, we need it. It's not like we want it, we, we need it. So, you know, we are taking steps, no matter what, what's out there, we are taking steps to, you know, be fiscally responsible when, um, when we can and when it's appropriate. So I just, I just think that's a, a, a point that I wanted to make. Thank you, David, thank you again.
All right, can I have a motion to accept the technology donation?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second. Okay, uh, any further discussion?
Just thank you, David, thank you for cultivating that relationship and keeping that up, it's greatly appreciated.
Thank you very much.
All those in favor? I pass unanimously. Okay, visitors' comments. Any citizen wishing to speak before the committee must announce themselves with the administration assistant prior to the opening of the regular session of the school committee. Visitor will identify themselves by name and address and shall speak for no longer than three minutes. Do we have any visitor comments? I wasn't sure if we would or not, since we had the public forum, but there might have been something on the agenda, so we'll give it a second. Okay, looks good. Next um, is the check-in with the GEA president. Uh, Cheryl sent me a text with some information that I could share, she wasn't able to um, attend tonight's meeting. So this is from Cheryl, she said, students and staff have adjusted well to all the safety protocols. We are thrilled to be in person with our students. A large majority of the staff have finally been vaccinated despite having returned to in-person months ago. At the elementary level, we are taking our students outside for lessons if possible. GEA is meeting next week to ratify the contract settlement. And in June, we will be celebrating the retirement of a few longtime and much-loved staff members.
Is something that we can be able to share about that, kind of say our thanks to, to those people on our.
I was just gonna ask the same thing, I was, I was hoping that we could at least get those names. And I know usually in the past, um, we've had them be, um, we've had people here uh, that were retiring just to thank, so I don't know if we can, Carol, if we can do something about that or at least get us our name so we can, um, can do some, um, some thank yous.
Yeah, I'll make sure we get.
Um, I don't know if Jen is.
There is a select board meeting this evening.
Oh, right, okay. Um, and Marcus is working. Zip him through this. Okay, um, continuing business, um, you're up, so.
Okay, so continuing business and reopening. So I'm sure all of you received the notice I sent to you regarding the change in the uh, Desi sent out an update about mask wearing while outside.
Yes.
So today, MIAA also came out with notifications saying that students in sports do not um, need to wear masks, uh, specta- spectators as well. I've received some emails from parents inquiring about, you know, how we're going to approach this. I know Nancy Jenks has had um, calls, and I believe um, Ally as well. So um, I did inquire at some of my other colleagues in other schools to find out, you know, how they're addressing it. Many are saying that, you know, that they need to change their policy in order to make it, you know, so they're gonna wait till their next school committee meeting. I've also contacted, because a parent emailed me today saying that Children's First was also allowing students to be out to recess um, without masks. So I contacted Cheryl, Donna, but Cheryl.
Nope, Donna, she's on.
And um, you know, to make sure, to verify it, to make sure it wasn't, you know, someone was, and she was saying, yes, that they, they started it today. And pretty much how she explained it to me was that she um, left it up to the parents. And she said, you know, if you want your child to wear a mask outside, we will remind them to put their mask on. And so now it comes to us um, looking at that. I did look at our policy again today, and it talks about mask breaks outside, which is what's been happening. You know, we are wearing our masks indoors, and our kids are currently at recess when they're outside wearing their masks. I also um, happened to take a ride this afternoon and went by a few schools and noticed that all of the children were outside, some were wearing masks, some were not. So to me, it's almost a, a parental choice. Um, I also looked at our MOA, um, and it references us having the mask policy, which we do have a mask policy, but, but our, our mask policy references breaks outside. I sent an email asking for input from our health and safety committee. And I had um, many saying, we have four weeks left. You know, why make any change? And I had some that said, how, how are you gonna police this when every day it's changing? And then when MIAA came out again today and changed it. So I'm bringing it to you to, you know, help me, give me some guidance on, on how to move forward with this. Um, we do only have, um, I'm thinking it's eighteen days of school left. You know, do we continue um, requiring masks at recess and um, for PE? Or are, are we looking to do something different?
Carol, just ask another question, Carol, what about um, the shared toys that was brought up in Desi as well? Was that something that you wanted us to talk about or?
Um, sure, if you, you want to talk about that.
I was, I'm sorry, it was just, it was grouped into that same.
No, there's all kind, there's, there were several things that were included. How frequently to clean spaces, they've reduced it, you know, saying that, you know, like you're doing doorknobs and handles and everything every day, they're saying it's, you know, not necessary. Um, the supplies, they say school no longer have to avoid sharing objects. This includes classroom materials, item, items for physical education or arts, art supplies. Shared objects no longer have to be cleaned or disinfected between use and should follow the updated cleaning guidance outlined below. So, um, you know, my first, when I got this was, why, why are we making a change now with eighteen days of school left? Um, but then Nancy showed up at my door and said, okay, what are we doing? Because my phone, you know, my email is blowing up, um, you know, Ally as well. And um, so I'm looking for, you know, some.
I know you said that you reached out to the safety committee.
Yeah.
But there wasn't a meeting for like a long discussion?
No, uh, well, the problem was, um, we were, didn't feel we needed a meeting, and then we got this notice, and I had a conflict. And, you know, couldn't, couldn't make it, so I asked for their input, you know, and as I said, it was mixed, you know? I mean, my first.
Today, right, just wondering if everyone had like enough time to respond with their feedback to.
Yeah, well, I did hear, you know, Dick Bomadere responded and, you know, I, I put it out there that with four, with four, a little over four weeks left of school, which is, I think, eighteen days, I was saying, why are we gonna rock the boat, why are we gonna take a chance? You know, um, especially when it's saying that they don't have to wear masks, you know, despite being in close contact. You know, so I don't know, is there a, is there a happy medium? You know, could we say they don't have to wear masks, but we're gonna expect them to maintain six-week distancing? Right, well, that is, it's, it's policing, you know, it's, it's the whole thing.
But we also, I definitely think we need to have the conversation, because as we just heard during public hearing for the last one, right? Like we're hearing from parents who want their input, you just said it, and it hit today, and we've already had numerous families' contacts, so we do definitely need to have a conversation.
Into that regard too, though, then I start to think of like, the parents that aren't concerned with it are usually not the ones that are gonna reach out from you. So you do end up only hearing from.
Of course.
Side of the party, if you.
Can we promote, can we promote Nancy? I see that she's on there, I'd like to have her way in, um, and be part of the discussion, if that's all right with everybody. I think it would be beneficial.
Anyone else?
I think just Nancy for now, unless anyone else. Nancy, are you there?
Yep, can you hear me?
I can, yeah, so I was just wondering if you could kind of give us your input on, on uh, what you're, what you're thinking.
So, um, it is challenging because the guidance keeps coming at us pretty much on a daily basis in trying to make the best decision for the district, especially with the, um, you know, in public, the mask um, guidelines are changing with the state so rapidly. Um, I know that we did get a consensus from Mr. Bomadere from the Board of Health, as well as Dr. Wodzinski sent an email this afternoon around quarter or six about his view as well, about um, both really recommending that we keep the policy in place um, to ensure the safety of everybody, um, because it is working. It's also important to note that in the guidance for recess and outdoors, it does talk about adults still needing to be masked, so it would be just students. Um, but with the UK variant out, students are, um, children are contracting it and transmitting it. Um, and a lot of our cases that we've had recently, there's been no known exposure. So, um, you know, it's kind of one of those things, um, we're kind of torn between what is happening at the public level um, versus what's happening in schools and trying to keep people safe. So I feel like it's kind of a, um, trying to find that balance. Um, you know, I, I do think, you know, what, as Carol said, you know, giving the parents the option um, is not a bad thing. They can make the best decision for their child, but it is also, um, you know, we've got eighteen days of school left too, so trying again to find that balance.
And I'm at a loss, I don't, I don't, I don't know what.
I'm just thinking about, I guess, um, yeah, I'm having kind of conflicting thoughts, because you have the MIAA with students that'll play sports. You probably have, I'm gonna go out on the limb, but you have the GAA, who's probably gonna follow the guidance and the recommendations from the CDC, which is saying no masks. And you're gonna have so students outside of school are going to be expecting to be outside and not have to wear masks. And then.
You also have EDC, which is.
That's your early childhood. So you've got these expectations that exist and be within these parameters for students. And then all year, on the other hand, they've been going to school with, this is how we do school, this is what school looks like, these are the expectations. Um, and so part of me feels like, well, there are now different expectations depending on what part of school they're participating in. And then I guess another part of me is like, well, this is what schools look like though all year, and to change it with four weeks left seems a little silly too, especially given what Nancy just shared about um, the physician's recommendation, as well as, you know, the Board of Health.
Well, it was Dick Bomadere, so he was.
But I thought you said Dr. Wodzinski just said.
Yeah, well, yeah, yeah, but Dr. Wodzinski is.
Not Board of Health, he's a school physician.
Yeah, but that's a reference book.
But Dick Bomadere is just on, speaking on himself, he's not.
Yeah, 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 he's not representing the Board of Health.
Sorry, the representative from the Board of Health.
Yeah.
Um, you know, so I, I guess I'm a little bit torn on that, which then, I guess, takes me back to the parent choice piece.
So here's the thing, I'm being a kid. If one parent says they don't have to, and because there's really no policy, and another parent says that, so you have one parent says no, one parent says yes. To make it consistent so that there is no other, um, we're, we're just trying to get to a school year, uh, no other outside influences on distracting the students, because that can become a big thing with elementary kids.
I, I know what you're saying, but I'm gonna play devil's advocate, that parents are gonna fight and say that the CDC regulations are all the same. I didn't want my kid wearing masks to begin with, and they're not wearing one.
So then you're. But it, but it's not for inside the building, we're only talking outside, right?
We're both buildings, outdoors.
And we're talking PE classes outdoors.
I, I still think you're gonna get some on some.
What is it on the bus? Do they still have to wear them on the bus?
Yes, yes. It's everywhere indoors. So then the same thing, devil's advocate, like I'm kind of seeing both sides, because even though there's only eighteen days left, there's also eighteen most likely very warm days left, it's getting really toasty. Um, and it is gonna be hard if you don't have to wear it at sports or maybe at after-school at Children's First, but then we expect it, like it is kind of. Like it is kind of sending some mixed signals, I could see that, but another big part of me, I'm putting like my kid hat on is, okay, if we say the kids don't need them at recess, but they still need them to walk into the cafeteria, where are their masks going when they're going outside? Are we going to have a whole bunch of kids losing masks, dropping masks outdoors? I do foresee that being a concern, especially at the elementary level, I'm not sure how they're going to do that if. Put it in your pocket, I have no idea, that's just like something in the back of my head, I'm curious. They have to have them in the cafeteria, they have to have them indoors to walk out, but then we'd have to come up with something of how they would.
If I remember correctly, in the beginning, when we first had kids in wearing masks, they were clipping them to the fence.
I hope that everyone actually grabs theirs, I mean, I've seen the last.
I don't know if I would. I'm just going to say that right now, what?
I think that's what I do, I don't know.
You're wearing them on your wrist like a bracelet.
There's, okay. I don't know, it's hard because we've got the guidance and all of these different things. We also have two very big players that are important, our town physician and Board of Health representative. Saying one thing and then all these guidances saying another, so we're kind of going to be in our own realm. I like the idea of it being optional for your students to wear it outdoors if you feel. That way, but.
One thing that, the, the adults out there are still going to be wearing masks, so it's not like, you know, there are people still with masks on out there. So, you know.
And we know that outdoors, the risk of transmission is extremely low, we're at like a one percent now. Outdoors, so, right, we, we know all of that, it's just a matter of what are we comfortable with. True, and there was one teacher that wrote on our Health and Safety email today, and it's just a different perspective. And she had said, with students being full in person now and not able to maintain the six feet in the classrooms, they're unable to take mask breaks. In the room like one at a time real quick, so that they actually felt it could be beneficial, because it would act as their mask break at recess versus losing instructional time. To have to take them out again for a mask break, that was just another.
So, so I guess I'm confused, so we're taking them outside for mask breaks.
Where they have to, when they have to be six feet apart in order to have a mask break previously.
So I guess, so then we're saying, when you go outside for recess, you can't take it off.
Unless you're six, so we're, are we staying with you have to be six feet apart and you can take your mask off for a mask break? Or are we saying that you can follow the newest guidance and just be outside and not six foot distance and just have your mask off?
Well, I think that that, it, it, it becomes, it starts to look at what we're, our policy's saying. If you're going outside for a mask break, you can take, everyone gets to take it off. But if you're going outside for recess. Some can take it off and some can't.
This is where Stephanie's saying that it would alleviate the need for a mask break per se, because they would be having their.
That would be their mask break.
Right.
And I just heard to, Donna said that they're using labeled paper bags for those when they go outside, just like, and they're treating it like if. I have her permission.
Maybe like a lunchbox type of thing, like it's how you leave it.
Just a paper bag, labeled, and then they're treating it like some kids, some kids have to wear a hat outside, their parents are, you must wear a hat. I was one of those because one of my kids gets sun sick, and then, you know, so that is, they're letting the parents kind of drive that, who wants to do that?
But how do you police that, I guess, is the other, like, what do you have a checklist? Like, how, how would you know, like, if, who has a mask, who doesn't have a mask, and like, you're going to take time beforehand to make sure? To me, that could get really. Just add another word.
I don't know, I mean, I think it's one of those things where we're gonna. We're going to make a decision that people are going to be. I mean, I understand we're not going to be able to make everyone happy all the time, but. There are decisions that we're making that there's, that are.
I don't know if this is, I'm kind of looking to see who's still on here, like, you know, I know we had visitors comments, but like, no one spoke up. Is there anyone, like, can we say, like, anyone that's feeling passionate in any certain way that it drives our decision? I, I feel like it's hard, like, we, we're here for students and students' best interest, that's always been our goal. We've been saying from the get-go that, you know, any of the decisions that we were making were also fueled by what our professionals, what, you know, what the. Health and Safety Committee or the Board of Health was saying, what the school's saying. So I feel like is that already our answer, right now, we're being guided by the health professionals to say that we should keep our masks on in seventeen more days? You know, I get that part of it's hot outside, it's hot in these masks, you know, they're running around, playing around. But I see what Jill's saying, that some families are going to. Say that they want it a certain way, that, you know, are we willing to make those exceptions? Can we make those exceptions? How does that work? You know, when certain things were finally told that they had to be followed, is this one of these that it's not mandated or it's just guided? So it's not a mandate, how does that work? I guess that's my, my big question, before we can make this decision, you know, we have Suzie's, sorry, good to Suzie. Suzie's mom says that's it, it says that we don't have to wear them outside, are we going to let Suzie not wear it outside? Because that, I feel like is your, are we saying, no, this is our mask policy, we're sticking to it? What is the ramifications there and how does that work?
Well, that's what we're supposed to be deciding. And it is hard because as much as we don't want other districts to influence us, it's going to, I've already heard from quite a few that have said that they are going to allow outdoors. With no masks, and I know people are going to come, you know, saying this place, this place, that place, and it's going to be on both sides, but. And of course, we're once again, like, one of the first school committees, I feel like to meet after this mandate. But we have heard already from a few districts that are, or maybe are not. And it's just, you know, so it, it's not like, it's horrible if we go one way or the other, because I think it's going to be mixed again, just like it was before. But also the, of the emails that you and Nancy received, were there, like, was the consensus like one way or the other? Like, they wanted to see masks continue, or they didn't want to see masks continue?
So for, for the parents that I heard, they wanted to know if we were going to allow their, to take their masks off.
But they didn't have an opinion either way?
Well, I, I wasn't going to respond to them till I had a, a clear picture. You know, as I can tell you, my first response when I got this, I was like. Why are we doing this with eighteen days of school left, when we, you know, been really good? Haven't, as Stephanie just said, we brought kids back and we did it, we did a good job of no, of not spreading. You know, like, why were we going to jeopardize it? And that was yesterday, and then today, the M I A A came out and basically said.
Well, here's the thing with that, though, we were, we're following, we've been, we, we didn't make up our own rules to bring kids back safely. So we've been following the rules that have been placed in front of us. So I don't think we can make the leap or even make the suggestion at a leap that by, that. Because we decided to follow the rule, you know, like, we had to follow the rules that were put in place for us, and we've been enforcing those rules. If the rules are changing, they're not changing, so everyone's going to go and get sick. They're changing because the information that's out there says that we can do this and still be safe, right?
Which is why I think it's coming out right now, because the state, you know what I mean?
Everything's. We've been living in sort of a semi-state of fear for a very long time, because everyone's been, we don't really know. So we're, we're a year in now, and I feel like, you know, I don't want it to be like we're making our, these decisions. And we're the only school that's going to be safe, because we're doing it. We've been following the rules like a long and have been safe, so I think that that's where, that's where I have a little bit of a hard time with it. This is me with my mom hat, not necessarily a school committee hat, because I'm following the rules, and if the rules light lessen up. I'm going to admit, I have a little bit of anxiety, like, oh boy, get a little naked, walk around, lap around. But the people that know a whole health care a lot more than me.
For making these decisions.
Are saying that it's safe to do so, so that's where we have to tread lightly and find out, you know, what we want to do. So I understand that the school physician wants to continue with it, and we have Dick Bomadere. But we've been on the more conservative side of some of these things, so, you know, playing devil's advocate a little bit, so I, I, I don't know. I don't know what the right answer is, but I want to make it clear that if we follow the rules, it doesn't mean we're not being safe. The people that are making the rules are determining that it's safe for us to be able to make these changes to our rules. So that's my one.
So if they have mask breaks now, and we turn recess into that mask break.
Which for all intents and clarifications, they still can go outside to teach if they want to, they can still go.
Cheryl said in her, in her remarks, that they, they are enjoying that, you know, so. Regardless of the, however we land on the mask thing, they can still go ahead and do that. I mean, gosh, way back in the day, pre-COVID, I remember I got taken outside for class, way back in, you know, the good old days, in the Wild West. So, you know.
Wild West of grandeur.
That's right. Well, I live in Western Mass, it could be the Wild West.
So, anyone else?
I just, I, you know. I gotta admit, it's, it's highly uncomfortable to make. This kind of a determination, because I do not have a medical degree. And I do feel a little bit of sense of being torn, because, you know, we've got some people saying yes, but then we've got people that. I would say more in the no than maybe what are.
What are you also hearing from a certain party more than another?
But I also think it's important, we don't need to have a medical.
As, who's, you know.
Well, right, we don't need to have a medical degree, we're looking at the guidances from the state, from the C D C. In my opinion, that's what would guide our decision, is what the professionals are saying.
Well, that's what, that's what I'm saying, is like, we have two of our professionals that say no, but then we have these people that are.
Of course.
You know, sort of running stuff that are saying, yeah, so.
A little bit of conflicting.
Yeah, conflicting, but I can say with, you know, I feel comfortable saying this, and someone will surely correct me if I'm wrong, is I feel like we've been. Grinby as a whole has been a little bit on the slower conservative side of matching up with some of the other guidelines. Is that, is that a correct statement?
Yes.
So. I'm feeling, based on this conversation, I think my personal opinion at this point, we still have to vote on it and everything, is maybe it's a parental thing. But again, I don't know how we police that, I don't know how we manage that, but. That almost gives.
I mean, if anything else, like, yeah, you know, we're going to tell them, yes, you're supposed to wear it, but at the same time, you're installing in your towel at home, you better keep your mask on. Do you know what I mean? Like, that's also. Well, you know what I mean, and trust me, I know I have.
I'm almost anxious to go that route too, though, because that, that's putting a lot of responsibility in the.
We could survey parents.
Well, by the time we get the survey and get it back, it's the days of school. You know.
Well, yeah, I mean, you could, I, I think, I think if we left it open to parents. It would give people the option to make the best choice for their family. If they felt strongly that they needed their, their child or children to continue to wear their mask for whatever personal reasons that they have. Then I think there would obviously be no one within the schools that would discourage anyone from continuing to wear a mask outside. And even probably support, you know, if there's questions.
Adults are going to be out there wearing masks.
Whatever it is, that would, you know, is that even past May twenty ninth? Yeah, that's how I read it. It's not going to change for adults, it's just with kids.
Yeah, it just, it says kids, adults must continue to wear masks outside.
But so, but how does that play into, because as of May twenty ninth, the governor's guideline is there is no.
But I think it's when you're at school around, I don't.
Yeah, oh wait, on May twenty ninth.
Maybe I'm right, it's too, but.
It will still apply.
I don't, yeah, they're saying it still will.
Will still apply, so they would still have to wear masks. What they were saying is that the event limits would be lifted, but the masks and everything would still have to apply. And social distancing.
Why do they do this and have all these conflicting?
It's all conflicting, then it says that you're vaccinated, you don't, even though most of our teachers aren't, like, it is all conflicting.
One of the things that Nancy's on there, we've all said, okay, so.
And we've got students that are fully vaccinated.
Vaccinated, it's wearing the mask, and all the people that aren't vaccinated.
Right, yeah, it makes no sense, but we have students in school now that are going to be starting to be vaccinated.
Nancy, do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, yeah, as of yesterday, I didn't get a chance to poll the numbers today, because we're getting information from families, they're not. They're letting us know the kids are getting vaccinated, but we don't have the copy of the cards. We had fifteen at the junior senior high school that were vaccinated, that were, we have been notified of. And the numbers are going up every day of kids that are either have had their first dose or are in the process of getting their second or have had their second. So it, we're starting, again, it's a family preference, so we may see some families that decline for different reasons. And again, it's kind of hard not to know what direction the state will take in the fall, like they did with the flu vaccine last August. I kind of hope that they don't tell us at the last minute that that would be required, like the flu vaccine, but. That's also something to keep in mind, but right now, we're, we're making progress, so. And there are, just to note, there are staff who are not vaccinated and are still choosing not to, so, just so that's on your radar. But a majority of the staff, about eighty plus, are vaccinated right now.
What I was going to say is that, you know, there are maybe people that choose not to vaccinate for whatever reasons, but are their choice, and.
Okay, so, so what do we think, like, what do we? We gotta try to. Rain this in, rain this in, because. I just don't even know, I, I, I have to admit, I'm a hundred percent at a loss, because it feels like you can make a play for either way, and. And it's so conflicting. I mean, we were, I, I was out this weekend, and people were like, oh, we don't need to wear, you don't need to wear your masks anymore, and I was like, oh, well. I thought, I thought I still did, because of, and they're like, nope, nope, so I feel like that.
So it, it, that's again, that depends, because if you're vaccinated two weeks after your second dose, you don't have to be. But then there are certain establishments that still require.
Like school.
Yeah, well, no, and there's like hospitals and other places that.
Of course, right, public transportation, air, airports, but truly, that does still apply for school as well, even if you're vaccinated as a.
Because it's a huge, that's where a lot of people migrate.
Yeah.
And are, and for over. So I'm just going to read for you what Dr. Tom did send. He said, sorry for the late reply, but I would also favor continuing the mask rules for the school as previously outlined. I think there are, there are going to be a number of moving pieces of information and recommendations out there in the coming weeks. We have regulations that are known by the staff and students and have been working. We should finish out the year four weeks with that, Dr. Tom.
Well, we have another meeting in two weeks, two weeks left, I mean. I can always revisit it and see what it's at at that point. Honestly, I mean, if the, if the complaints come pouring in and people are. Losing their minds and we're making, we've made the wrong decision, I don't see why we can't.
But just let it stand for now with the recommendation that was given from the school physician and the representatives from the Board of Health, okay? I'm not to be the outlier, but I really would not mind having it be a parent choice, I'm going to be honest. I mean, my student came home, Jane, said her teacher said their district is doing it, like, kids are going to be talking, they're going to be asking, I have a feeling that regardless, we're going to get. Cured from people very soon, but I will personally say I would not mind outdoors if. Cured from people very soon, but I will personally say I would not mind outdoors if. It was a parent choice. That's just my two cents. We can vote however, and I look and stick with that, but I personally would feel com- comfortable with that. For outdoors.
Well, I need a motion, so whoever whoever makes a motion can decide how it do, how it goes, and then we can vote accordingly.
We gotta probably do something.
No, we have to vote for something now. I'm saying we have it, uh, you know, we have safety committee as a standing item on the agenda, so we have a meeting in two weeks. I thought they were meeting this week. We're sure there's not like an emergency thing, cuz there's a bunch of people that thought with the new mask thing that they were going for like GAA and stuff, so. Alright, so we have to do something for now and that we can revisit in two weeks, I guess. I feel like, I don't know, is is my indecision really a lack of a decision? Like my ability, my ability to try to coddle people is really not making decision. We're just gonna come back and have the same. Thing. This is a tough one. No, we don't, we need to. So what happened was, so our terms expire on the twenty first, so we were just. Re-elected, so we have to go be sworn in before the twenty first. And that was one of the things I was gonna bring up at the end is we have to. Uh, we have to schedule out our, um, our next group of meetings, but they're, you know, they're every two weeks. Um, but we, so it's like. I don't know if we wanna just schedule the one for next two weeks, because then at that meeting, we'll have to reorganize. Um, and you know, talk about, although we really didn't do much committee work at all this year, we did a bunch with the budget. Committee, but you know, everything was, um. Pretty much COVID related, we didn't have a a a bunch of other stuff that was necessarily done, so. Anyway, I digress. Um, so that is something that we need to decide on, um, how we wanna do that, so we can maybe just. Schedule one meeting for the next and then, you know. At that meeting, then kind of get the calendar. Together. Clear as mud? You're looking at me like. Oh, just motorcycles. They're having a good time. It's nice out. It's still light out. It's ten of eight. We're still here. Alright, motion. We need a motion. This is the best part, I can't really make the motion. And then I get to say second, and then I get to say discussion, and then we vote.
I say I make a motion and keep it the way it is and then make the decision after we hear from everyone else.
Second, or discussion?
I guess my like discussions, I'm worried at that point, we're looking at like June first. So would we not just call it like either leaving it or changing it?
Well, I mean, in two weeks, there could be a whole bunch more.
Oh, absolutely.
More guidance that's out that.
If if you're not changing anything, I don't think.
I'm torn right up the middle. I have no idea what to say. Like, I would almost want to stay, I I because I. My kid go to go to first, and I'm not making them wear their masks at their school, like I. It's getting hot outside and I. I feel like we are, I've taught my kids at this point what they need to know, and if other families aren't comfortable, then they'll tell their kids to wear their masks. I don't know, you know. And like everyone else said, they're gonna be going to sporting events, they're gonna be. You know, I feel like it's all part of that narrative that you're teaching your child. We have a conversation at the table tonight, cuz today was the first day they went to. Didn't wear their mask, and you know, we, I should say last night, you know, but you're still respecting people's personal space, then. I mean, you're just, I mean, for discussions that I have around the dinner table with my family, so. I'm, but at the same time, I would have no problem if they were told they had to wear their masks here. I wouldn't be. Complaining, so, and or voicing anything otherwise, so. Know which way to go about it. So then making wanna feel like it should be a parent choice. And allow it go that way, so. I don't know. Right down the middle. I don't know, I don't know, so. And I feel like the parents that aren't comfortable, there was several, um, reach outs to us to let us know what's happening, to let us know. You know, reminders, you're really not comfortable, please let us know, um.
So just, I guess, the point of clarification in Dr. Tom's. Information, was it more about maintaining the status quo for students because. It was a disruption. To what they're accustomed to?
So.
Or was he more concerned about like transmission?
He doesn't say, he just says it's been.
There's a lot, a number of moving pieces of information and recommendations out there in the coming weeks.
Right.
I had sent out, this is what I wrote.
I just felt like there was something that he wrote in there about something about students and the last four weeks or.
That they're familiar, you know, we have regulations that are known by the staff. And students and have been working.
Right, but just on that other side too, those students are still going to alter their, if they participate in GAA or athletics or. Other outdoor activities, like regardless, there is most likely going to be that disruption because we all saw it May twenty ninth. I'm sure people are gonna.
When they said that they still had to maintain their social distancing and other pro- protocols when they're outside. So this was for, cuz they were talking about gathering, um, school events. Outside, so they could have them. And they didn't have to wear their masks, except they still had to maintain the social distancing.
Right, and I think like Audrey said, that's where I'm torn, because if I say, okay, you can go play your sport with no mask on, and then I'm gonna say. But we're still gonna have it at recess, like I do feel like that's a tough family choice, and I do wanna be transparent in that, because. I don't wanna come off looking like I'm saying one thing and potentially doing another, but that is a tough, um. Spot where it's kind of a family choice, like Audrey said, you know, we talk all the time about washing your hands and using sanitizer and still being mindful of spaces and. I feel like it is definitely a parental, um, thing at this point as the state is easing up that, um.
Well, I don't think GAA has made any decision yet, right? Because they're governed by Board of Health and apparently they haven't met yet, so. I don't think there's any change to GAA.
Yeah, I don't think.
But I think what you will see at GAA events is that people will be able to wear, spectators will not have to wear. Masks outside. And I think that as of today, right, as of the eighteenth, right?
My follow-up then is if GAA has to wait for Board of Health to make a decision, do you have to wait till Board of Health makes a decision?
Because gee, we, we have been doing our own thing with consultation with them if needed, but we've been, and they had said they weren't going to give us. Rules, right? They weren't, but GAA is different. They're being completely governed by Board of Health. So.
Nancy, Nancy, um, wondered if she, we should put it on the agenda for the Board of Health? Would that help? You make a decision?
I just think the last time Board of Health made it pretty clear that they were gonna let the schools govern accordingly with D E and our own guidance. I believe that's what happened the last time. So I also don't really know if we need to play like pass the torch in a sense.
Don't bring us back to January, Audrey. So I know that we, we, we have a motion to keep it the way that it is, and if I I also understand that if we're, we don't really need to vote. But I think we need to, at least, we need to know how we feel on it, and the only way we're gonna know about that is to vote, no? So. We don't have to have it, we can table the motion and we can just kind of have a temperature check and see where we're at, and then. Have some more discussion if you want. I I mean, I think at this point. We can probably go around and around on this, because there there's a lot of indecisiveness about this.
Because we can see both sides of it.
Right.
I definitely, I clearly see both sides of it. Um, we know what we do as parents and what we expect from our children. Is that what every household does though? So at my fear is if right now the variants are affecting children and they're congregating. And not social distancing, and while they're outside, kids are, they socialize differently.
And then, not to add another level, but I feel like we kind of are censoring more about East Metal, but what about the high school, where they're more cognitively available to. Space themselves and all that, cuz it's about PE, it's about.
Probably do it less.
Well, just to play both sides, I feel like we keep talking recess all day, it does affect the other school as well, that's all. Cuz I think as, you know, as, I mean, certainly, quote, correct me if you're wrong, cuz you might see it, but I think as kids. Get with their peer groups and things like that, like they tend to just kind of get like magnets and forget that spacing and. You know. I think it's harder as students get older, so that middle and high school level to keep reminding about distance and space.
So there is one other, um, document out there. From the Massachusetts Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs. Um, came out with a youth and adult, adult amateur sports activity document. That also kind of, I'm gonna.
While you're looking at that, would that also change our mask policy for our sports?
Sports aren't listed in our masks, in in our mask policy. It doesn't say anything. Ally looked at it today and came down to me.
So are they, so then.
I was just gonna go there.
Okay, so then what is happening on the field?
Well, they were guided by, they're, they're, I think what it says is that they follow whatever MIAA says. I don't think it, we mandate the mask policy. I believe MIAA.
So when they have games, they'll no longer be wearing them, and they will no longer have spectators wearing them.
As well as practice.
So let's ask Ally and see, give her a heads up. Don't put the camera on right away. Give her a chance, make sure she's not mid chew.
Shared, I just shared it with you, because basically what it does is, it's, it has it, um. It has three levels.
In the holder?
In there, no, I just emailed it to all of you.
Might wanna double check my email, Carol, cuz I'm not getting them.
It's gonna take a while.
No.
So let's see if Ally is available.
When you sent the mask policy update.
She's still muted, though. Oh, there she is.
Hi, everyone. Good eve, good evening.
Hi. Um, so we didn't wanna, um, bring it on you. Uh, so we, I were trying to give you a heads up, so we wouldn't catch you mid chew. Um, but we're wondering, um, if you could just give us a point of clarification about, um, the sports, because it's. Uh, they're not, it's not covered under the current mask policy, uh, except that it follows what the MIAA says, is that? Is that correct?
Yes, the MIAA came out with a statement today, um, that flipped everyone's world upside down yet again. And lifted the mask policies, guidelines for all spectators, athletes, coaches, and officials. So we are governed by the MIAA, um, they follow the direct guidance from the EEA. And. My thoughts were on revisiting this again with the Board of Health, but. I don't know, they would probably say there's low transmission outside. And it's really up to the local. Board of Health to make the overall decision, um, when meeting with the Board of Health, they have always said to me that. They aren't going to micromanage our program. Um, is it worth sending an email to them? Yes, um, with them approving wrestling because of the low transmission. I can foresee and predict that they, you know, it's something that they won't police, um. And it's gonna put us all in a really difficult situation, so. Um. I think as of right now, I'm looking to follow that guidance. You know, that they have. Put out there today. It's gonna make it really difficult, like, you know, in the last couple games we've had, you know, we've had. Spectators coming to the school without masks on and. You know, there's only so many of us to go in what direction, and it's, it puts us in a really difficult situation. You know, to say, you know, put her, put your mask on, and then you are up against a person saying, well, I'm fully vaccinated, and. We can go back at them and say, you know, this is our school policy, um. I love your thoughts on it, but, you know, and we've been following the EA guidelines. With the idea of the Board of Health adopting those. And they've stated on multiple occasions to us that whatever those guidelines are, as long as we're following them. You know, that's what it would be, and think about and consider other schools traveling to our school too. We would have a school traveling if they're. Their school and several of the schools in our area have already. Have already taken this guidance under consideration, um, so the schools from Wilbraham and they're traveling to Granby and none of their. None of their players are wearing masks because Wilbraham already adopted it, and they don't have to. That puts us in a really difficult situation when we're here in masks. You know, so love your feedback, I'd love your thoughts on it. Um, I just wanted to share my opinion. Um, from what my observations are within the last couple days of Baker's latest guidance.
And does it change the amount of spectators that you can have?
No, I believe they had increased that. I'm not ever worried about the amount of spectators. We're pretty small. As it is, but when we do have multiple games, we have lacrosse, both teams lacrosse playing at the same time and baseball, um, but we're all pretty spread out.
Okay. Thank you.
And and we're outdoors, so, you know, I've seen it, and I think people have been pretty respectful about. While being outdoors socially distancing. Um, I think it's still in the back of everybody's feel, like people are on edge a little bit when it comes to feeling, you know, taking the mask off. And some people do, if, I guess, you know, if they wanna keep it on, then they can make that decision and. Keep it on. I just came from my son's baseball game and not one person had a mask on. None of the athletes, none of the coaches, the ump, nobody. And that, they follow the same guidelines, the EA. So it kind of puts it in perspective when you see it firsthand today. Like yesterday, at practice, they all had them on. Today, not one person had them.
Right. There's just not an easy answer for this, I don't.
No, but I think. I don't know, I'm just kind of.
It's hard, it really is, it comes down to, like, if we wanna decide to have more stringent, you know, expectations. And then really holding spectators, parents, and athletes to those expectations.
And I think that part of it is kind of. An insurmountable task. And I think, um, we're kind of. Potentially fighting an uphill battle that doesn't need to be fought. Um, especially when we're trying to just maintain a status quo. For the sake of, um, in kind of just, that's why I had to reiterate that, um. Response from Dr. Tom to Carol, because I was trying to understand if it was more concerning about like potential spread, transmission, like that part. Or if it was more about, this is what students are used to, and we don't wanna cause another transition or disruption. Because that's already been done outside of these four walls. Um, and so I, I heard kind of maybe both, but it's, then the other piece is maybe smaller. So, you know, I, the more we've kind of talked about this, I'm, I feel like I know where I stand. Not confidently, but I feel like I don't have any other avenue and need to kind of potentially leave it to parent choice. Because otherwise, we're setting up people to. Take on a task that's, um, that they can't face, like regardless of your position in the schools or, um. Um on the athletic fields or whatever it is.
So one thing is, we've got to remember what we're talking about is only for the schools, because athletics is following MIAA, so. We don't, we're not governing that, we've given Ally the directive to follow. Right, so you know, that's up to her and it sounds like that's going to be happening, right? Ally, yes, you're going to be following that, um that guideline right from MIAA.
Yeah, that's the plan, that seems to be consensus among the AD chat um today. And some are waiting, some of the smaller communities are waiting, you know, for additional guidance, but um consensus is, you know. Most of the schools. And I don't understand this too, like how some schools can just accept and prove it and be done with it. Um without bringing it to their school committee, I'm not quite sure, I don't, I don't really understand that, um I think they can just make a decision. Um but some schools don't have health and safety committees either, you know, that are in place like we do. You know, I think we went above and beyond this year, um and we're, like you all said, extra safe and planning and, you know, bringing kids back, but. Um some schools have already adopted it. You know, to begin effective today.
Right.
But that was my plan, because it will put us in a really difficult situation, you know, when we travel to other schools and when they travel to us.
Right. That makes sense, and so I'm glad at least that piece is out of our purview essentially, like the, you know, that. Makes it a little bit easier, so if we end up doing parent choice. How, how then do they have to come in with a note, like how does, how does that get implemented? Do they just, do the kids just say my mom said yes or my dad said yes, I mean, what do we? How do we make that work?
Can we do like an opt-in or opt-out for recess masks and send that home and, I mean. I don't know, normally I think if you want something, it's just an opt-in at this point.
The easiest is probably just to send an email.
I mean, they're, they're all wearing them indoors, it's not like someone doesn't have to bring theirs to school one day, they're all gonna have them inside, so.
So if you would just, you know, something that goes home, saying if you would like your child to be encouraged to wear them at recess, then just send something back saying you're. You know, opting into this, because then they have to send something back, otherwise you don't get anything and they're fine with just continuing. Without.
Right, and I think it's reasonable to say that we're following EA, DCE and CDC, all recommending that, you know, they can go outdoors. Yeah, yeah, right, and following along through MIAA for outdoor.
If you're gonna make a parent choose, then you might as well just say, we're gonna get rid of the masks outside and let them choose to wear if they want to, instead of opting in not to wear, right? That's gonna eliminate a lot of confusion, just say we're not, we're not gonna require them outside, but if they want to wear.
But you're more than welcome to, right?
Yeah, then you don't have to opt in at all. Not even, like just. We, we don't necessarily, if our policy is we're not gonna require them.
Right.
Then that we're not.
Yeah, you can certainly just encourage.
Just encourage your child if you want to wear the mask, but let's not say. Opt in to wearing it or not, I think that just adds too many layers to it, just say, we're not gonna require them, if you want your kid to wear a mask, encourage them to wear a mask, but we're not gonna. If you want to reach out to make sure my kid's wearing it, certainly, yes, certainly, certainly.
Sitting at the door checking.
Exactly.
Know that we're not putting that for student attendance, we're not, I don't feel like there should be like an expert checking balance. Again, that's family discussion. That they need to have with their child, um but I'm sure like anyone who wants to know, like, keep an eye out, Johnny's supposed to be there.
All right, well then, can I just make a motion then to um, how would we do this to? Amend our policy to allow for outdoor. Right, how, how do we word this for outdoor? Just to comply with the new. To adhere to the new EA, CDC, DCE, mask change. Ah, perfect. Do I have a second? Okay, so we are saying to comply with the new guidance. And to clarify, if. Parents have strong feelings, they can encourage their child or they can send a note in to say that they still want their kid to wear a mask. Is that, it's not an amendment, it's just my clarification of an understanding of the amendment, of the motion, is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. All those in favor? Okay, so for um yay and one abstain. Okay, um. Yeah.
Providing any um spring sports update?
Um the only update that I can provide you is that we worked with the Board of Health. Um last week and they gave us permission to move forward with a competitive season. As long as the wrestlers were vaccinated, um by the second week of June, um eight of the nine wrestlers will be fully vaccinated. I just secured um two home matches with our wrestlers, which is pretty cool, um the coaches are really pumped. And obviously we'll have to go back to the drawing board, you know, around the whole mask policy because wrestling is high risk. So that is likely an example of when we may say and require masks to be on the athletes during wrestling. Because it is a high-risk sport, um it's not like baseball where everybody's pretty spread out, so. Um I'll just use judgment there in that regard and make sure we communicate that out, um but that's about the only update I have. Our sports teams are doing great, um a lot of new coaches on staff, the athletes seem to be really enjoying it, the weather's, you know, turning around. Um, yeah, and everything, you know, is shaping up real nice, I did want to give special thanks to. Um Peter Gay and the work that he has done on our fields um over the past couple weeks. And it's pretty incredible, you know, the community that we have and the um support within the community to lend a hand to help out, to improve the fields. Um much appreciated from Peter and his team, um especially keeping it local with, you know, the electrician that was a Granby graduate, so. Again, I just wanted to give extra thanks to that group of um committee members.
Excellent, thank you so much and thanks to uh. Peter Gay and uh the people that have been helping him, that's just fantastic, it's nice to see um people coming together and supporting. Supporting the school community and the athletes in that way. Okay. Um new business, uh the school committee calendar of events. Table it to next week, sounds good, two weeks, well, to whenever we decide, uh how about table to next meeting, date TBD.
And I don't know.
I'm sure.
And Steven is on, exactly, I was gonna say, at some point I'd like to start. Like with this kind of stuff, like being a more collaborative process of, of.
Um you lost me.
She was saying something, she was saying something about having Steven join in and I know Steven, you would have the conversation with Steven too.
Yeah, so I have stuff to share with you later.
So I do, I would like um Steven um promoted, only because the next item up on the agenda. Is a statement of interest at the MSBA. So. We're pulling in Steven.
Hi, everybody.
Hello. We saw your face for a second and then you went back to. You just.
That's okay.
Hello.
Hello.
Hi.
Alex, Alex was trying something new. So it kind of sent you in and out.
I thought so, I don't know what's up with my video, but I'm here, I'm working on that.
Okay, so the next thing up on the agenda is um a vote from the school committee. Regarding our statement of interest for the MSBA, so there is a document um in your folder. Um Steven, Adam and I um have been meeting and we have. Uh you know, started the process of completing a statement of interest. Um regarding um the high school. We obtained um the East Meadow um statement of interest to have an idea of, you know, the details. Um there were, we also noticed a couple other um ones in there for smaller projects that were done. So we were able to use some of the information historical, because the three of us don't have that. Um so we were able to pull, you know, because they wanted to know historical information regarding the building. You know, and the building broke ground in nineteen fifty-eight and was completed, I think, in nineteen sixty. So um, so anyway, we are completing what's called a statement of interest. Um to look at doing um a renovation.
Yeah, renovation, updates, you know, whatever we want to call it to the, you know, junior, senior high school, and this is the.
This is one of the steps that we have to take, we have to get a vote from the school committee. And then after that, we um need to get on the select board. Um to get a vote from the town, so the document's in there, um to kind of let you know. You know, what we need to do, I mean, COVID is really highlighted, you know, our, our issues in the building with our airflow. And um you know, we also, um Adam, I think we'll speak a little later, you know, about. Our work with the um kitchen, you know, and readying that, you know, so. Um you know, there's clearly um, you know, work that needs to be done.
And Carol, I just think we should probably read it for the record, because I think.
Yes.
They need a copy of this video and the minutes uh on top of the approval.
Do you want me to read it then?
If you could, yes.
Sure. Resolved, having convened in an open meeting on May eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. Prior to the SOI submission closing date, the School Committee of Granby, in accordance with its charter, bylaws and ordinances. Has voted to authorize the superintendent to submit to the Massachusetts School Building Authority. The Statement of Interest Form dated June twenty-five, twenty twenty-one to the Granby Junior Senior High School located at three eighty-five to three eighty-seven. East State Street, which describes and explains the following deficiencies and the priority categories for which an application may be submitted. To the Massachusetts School Building Authority in the future. Number five, replacement, renovation or modernization of school facility systems. Such as roofs, windows, boilers, heating and ventilation systems. To increase energy conservation and decrease energy-related costs in a school facility. While the roof at G uh Grammy Junior Senior High School was replaced in twenty nineteen. The windows, boilers, heating and ventilation system, systems remain a significant concern. The building utilizes single-pane glazing and metal infill panels within a metal framing system. Which contributes to a very poor thermal envelope. The boilers, despite upgrades to the circulating pumps in twenty twenty-one, are not efficient and do not allow the schools to conserve. Energy and or decrease energy-related costs. Finally, the Univent ventilation system is completely non-functional and does not provide any type of air circulation. Which would bring fresh outdoor air into the school building. Number seven, replacement of or addition to obsolete, obsolete buildings in order to provide for a full range of programs. Consistent with state and approved local requirements. Classroom spaces are approximately twenty percent smaller than MSBA guidelines. Science labs are approximately twenty-two percent smaller than MSBA guidelines. The gymnasium and cafeteria are both undersized per MSBA guidelines. There is no space available for occupational or physical therapy. Most of the building does not meet current ADA standards. Building codes have changed significantly since the original construction and there has been little done in order to keep the building up to code. There is inconsistent heat and ventilation throughout the building, no key lock system in the interior of the building. The locker rooms have exposed fin tube radiators, no automatic sprinkler system. The gymnasium was deemed unusable for athletics in twenty twenty, twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one due to COVID nineteen. And a lack of ventilation system, these are just some of the issues with the building. And then it looks like um. It continues and hereby further specifically acknowledges that by submitting the Statement of Interest Form. The Massachusetts School Building Authority in no way guarantees the acceptance or the approval of an application. The awarding of a grant or any other funding commitment from the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Or commits the city, town, regional school district to filing an application for funding with the Massachusetts School Building Authority. Okay.
Can I, can I just make one small amendment that we have to make to this is. In there, it says most of the building is not ADA compliant, which um was put in there at, prior to our conversation with the building inspector. And I think just semantics, it'll change to some of the building, um in his estimation. And he believes most of the building is, based on the doors being replaced and some, and some other upgrades. Is ADA compliant, so that will just change from most to some.
Then there's one other one, it says um in the first um paragraph, it says the boilers despite. Upgrades to the circulating pumps in twenty twenty-one are not efficient and do not allow the schools to conserve, it's plural, it should be school.
School.
They were playing with semantics.
Okay, so um for the vote of the school committee. Uh minutes of the school committee meeting at which the vote was taken must be submitted. With the original signature of the committee chairperson.
Okay, can I have a motion? Second. All those in favor? Aye. So we're just, this is just to. We're not committing anybody to anything, we're not spending any money, we're not costing taxpayers a penny.
Yep.
We are putting it out there to see if they will first even meet with us and discuss it, right? And if the, and then it goes through the whole process.
Thank you, my hand hesitation wanted you to say that, so thank you.
No, it's, it's very, um, this part is the easy part, this is the part we can, we've done several times with statements of interest. I think this is probably like our eighth one.
I would say in this case, it's probably not easy and we're gonna spend, we've already spent and we're gonna spend countless hours, because this has to be flawless. If we have any chance of. Being awarded some type of funding from the MSBA, so um I just want to make that clear that we're, we're putting in a lot of hours, because this needs to be. I mean, we've, we were on the website and, you know, there's been a handful of uh statements of interest. I totally understand, I wasn't saying it to you, I, I just wanted to make it clear, like we, you know, we're putting a lot of time and effort into this because. We can't afford not to.
Right, right.
Be considered.
We have not committed anybody to anything, all we have done is saying that, yes, we agree. That we want to send this forward as a statement of interest for them to look at us and see if we can qualify for any grants and if there's anything that they can do.
Correct.
To help us.
And that's why we listed it under two areas, one is a potential replacement, modernization, and the other is placement.
So there's nine options or ten options included in it, so that you can check one or multiple. These were the ones that we thought were obviously most relevant to what we wanted to, but there are several options that you can choose from.
Um, there's something else in our folder here about, um, what's it called? Remote survey summary, but I don't see that corresponding to something, is that, is that going?
Yes.
Okay.
I have.
Oh wait, are we done with this then?
Yeah, I think that's all, this is, that's all we had to do for that.
Yep.
It's been a long day and I'm starting to lose my, I'm losing my mojo.
Moving on.
Oh, moving on, okay.
Moving on.
Superintendent's report.
So I have, you know, um, um, pass, pass them out. This is, um, last week, I believe Audrey asked for a, a status of remote learning. So, um, here's the breakdown, one page information for you regarding, how many teacher, I mean, how many students are remote? So at Granby Junior Senior High School, there is a full-time support teacher available through Zoom. There are thirteen seventh graders, there are five eighth graders, there are seventeen ninth graders, there are eleven tenth graders, there are twenty-two eleventh graders, and there are twenty-one twelfth graders.
What is the, as the, what date?
As of yesterday. That's how many people are remote at the Granby Junior Senior High School, yes.
That seems, the tenth grade never seems incredibly high to me. And the eleventh grade seems crazy high, it's almost a third of the class.
Yep, yeah.
Yeah, there was a big percentage that stayed remote, I think it was like six.
Yeah, yeah, he's, he's about fifty percent in, I think. Steven, are you still there?
I'm still there, we're well over fifty percent now. For a long time, it was like fifty-three percent. We're up in the seventy, seventy-five percent range now.
So, and they have no expectation of, they're just gonna stay remote?
Actually, Carol said is accurate as of yesterday. We actually had one seventh grade student come in for MCAS yesterday and decided to stay, um, that they wanted to stay beyond that. So we're, we're working on that, but, um, it's, it's still pretty accurate as of yesterday.
So, um, Ally and Suprago put together a survey that they sent out to the students at Granby Junior Senior High. Describe what is different. So these are kind of some of the responses, nothing, lifetime schedule, social aspect, less engagement. So they asked for suggestions to improve remote learning. Twenty-three out of the twenty-six said no suggestions. One stated to be better when following up with this student, they felt a couple of classes could involve the remote learners more. And then one stated to poll the remote learners more often. And then next steps, um, follow-up scheduled with the student interviewed, present survey results to staff and poll remote learners at the conclusion of the year. East Meadow also has a full-time teacher available through Zoom. There are thirty total remote learners. You've got the breakdown, there's a two pre-K, four K, for first, six second, three third, none in fourth, five in fifth and six in sixth. They used the same survey, sent it to parents, um, about how much has changed. Many responded that little had changed. Uh, live, less live lessons, less FaceTime, uh, more independent work. Have you, at, one of the questions that East Meadow asked, have you accessed the support teacher Zoom classroom? Of the thirteen responses, only one student had accessed the support class. Uh, do you have any suggestions for improving? Many responded that it was doing great, uh, live stream lessons, more access to their teacher and hands-on activities. So. That was your update, Audrey, that you asked about remote.
Can I just ask a silly question?
Yeah.
It says that the thirteen responses, only one student has accessed the support teacher. So what else is the support teacher doing if they're not being accessed?
So the support teacher also, I think, has kids in class. Okay, so the next thing that we wanted, anyone else have any questions, sorry?
Yeah. Yeah, because like what she said, it says there's a full-time support teacher.
Right, so there is a teacher for them to access. Um, and as far as I know, she's also working with, with students. So she has blocks of time, I believe, set, I don't know, but.
But wait, wait, it, there's no, um, for the high school, there's no, there's no question about whether or not the teachers, the teachers being accessed there.
Well, we, because it was, because it was the, um, you know, the, we changed it up because we weren't gonna ask the students. So we asked the parents, let me check Ally's.
But they're not available at certain times, right? Isn't it like they're available at certain.
So Bill, can we promote Bill?
Yeah.
Not right now.
I mean, it, and here's the other part to me, it's right, out of, you know, thirty in the elementary school, thirteen parents responded. Out of twenty-three of the twenty-six, there's obviously four more kids that are independent. So we really didn't hear from a lot of families either.
Well, we don't know if the, I mean, there might be SIBs. So you might, you might have thirteen responses, but you could cover twenty-six kids.
Very true.
Or even more, I mean, you could have multiple kids, you know, could cover all, all.
So, uh, Ally does have a pie chart. Have you accessed support through Mr. Flito's remote Google classroom? And there were eleven point five percent said yes and eighty-eight point five said no.
So what is he doing then?
He's a building, he's a building-based sub, so he's also supervising other classes.
Yep. And Bill, your person?
Same thing with us, it's a building-based sub. Now, those students are also getting support from their classroom teachers. So their classroom teachers are posting the work and they're giving them the work. But this Zoom is there for if they need help during the day in addition to that. So she's there to offer any support when the classroom teachers aren't online. And when she's not doing that, she's helping in classrooms and she's supervising other students that are in the building.
That's the same for us, so, um, many of our teachers did not make a shift when we went to full-time in-person. They maintained, um, what they were doing when it was in hybrid. So, um, those students might just be accessing their, um, assigned teacher rather than Mr. Flito.
So it would be safe to say that both, um, remote teachers have schedules with other things filled in throughout the day? Yep, right?
I, I can tell you, our building-based subs are so, their plates are so full right now because we only have the two subs. And with teachers taking personal time and other, you know, commitments and things like that, uh, I'm sure it's the same with the high school. We are, we are, you know, filling everybody's, um, schedule all day.
Agreed, at times are supervising up to two or three classrooms plus the remote students.
Do you have anything else for your report?
Yeah, well, I have the next report, which is the, um, twenty twenty-one projected enrollment. And there was a question about, um, have we contacted, um, the school choice? And, uh, our students that left for a private school. And I was gonna share my screen if I know how to do. Okay, so, good, it's up there. So this was as of, um, and Stacy, I believe, is still on, she hasn't had to put her kid to bed. As of today. And so, um, this is projected enrollment based on the responses that we have received so far from families. So resident enrollment is at five ninety-four. Returning, um, uh, choice in students is currently ninety-eight. New choice in students is thirteen. Returning home school is eight and returning private is three.
So I do have a question because the last time we had one of these, it got confusing because it, there was, she had already promoted. So when we're looking at grade eleven for projected enrollment, that is today's current sophomores.
Correct.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we're at the, that, that's what we're seeing.
Yep, and then down below, uh, identifies those, uh, um, by grade level and are, who are not returning or have, are undecided.
Okay, I'm confused, sorry. So, this is, this is next year's numbers, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, so what we're saying is we contacted parents who left as a result of COVID for private school. We contacted them to find out if they were returning. Okay, so we have grade two, three not returning. Home school parents that had left, not returning, there's one. For a total of four in grade two. Grade three, we have one undecided. So we're still waiting on that. In fourth grade, we have one not returning, they're staying at a private school. And in fifth grade, we have, um, one, two, three, not, not returning.
Well, two, I mean, one of those is undecided, so they could end up coming back.
They could, they could change.
Now, what I don't see on this, um, I really like this because I feel like it's, uh, super helpful to see at a glance what we're looking at. But what we don't have is how many are choicing out. So we. You know.
So, well, choice out right now, um, we, we would have.
At least the ones that affect the budget that are choosing out of what grades they're in.
And the, the charter school ones, you know, like, so.
Yeah, so unless we've been, unless we've been notified of any changes, which I don't know if, um, Bill or Steven have been informed of anybody choicing, you know, out or if Stacy is aware.
So how does that work? They can just apply and not tell us?
Yeah.
So how do, how do we ever know that our numbers are right?
Get a release saying they're leaving.
Yeah, they have to, yeah, they have to withdraw. So if they get a, if they apply and they get accepted, they can't be enrolled in two different schools. So they have to withdraw from their current school to be able to enroll in the new school.
So the only thing I guess on this one, I would appreciate a co, a column that shows what our total number for each of these grades is a choice out. Like, you know, we know that there's a private kindergarten at Children's First. So how many of the kids?
Well, we're not gonna know K.
But private schools, we don't, you don't pay out.
We don't pay out to private.
Right, no, but it's.
I see what you're saying, no, I was, I was gonna guess what you're saying, which is that when those kids come back in first grade, potentially, that there would be a benefit to knowing what that number is.
Right, right, because they're, those are resident kids.
Sure, I, I see, and when they're right, and that's how you.
Yep, yeah, but then, but then we know, like, there's, you know, kids that are current, um, current freshmen or say current eighth graders that we.
Are gonna lose to vocation.
Or lose to vocation or lose to, um, other.
It would be nice to have a heartbeat on it.
Right, just because even if they're going to a private school and we're not paying, it's still less that we have in the number. So it's just like, who, who's leaving? Like, who, who do we know that's already leaving? That, are they staying, leaving, you know, can we? I don't think we can follow up with that, but if we know that there's, say.
Well.
All I can think of right now, like, I know, I know that there's.
Nine on the bottom that you know, you know.
But those are for the younger kids, I'm talking about for the high, like, my example is, like, I know that because we're friends with the family, that there is a current junior that school chose, uh, you know, schooled out, school choice out at the end of their sophomore year and, um, and went to a different school, school choice. So that's one, that's a resident for the, you know, would be seniors for next year. Is that student coming back or are they staying, staying there? Like, where are some of the kids that have already left in our, you know, just so we know?
Carol, questions for these nine kids?
Yep.
This is the nine out of the forty-three that we lost? Basically through the pandemic?
Yes.
So everyone from the high school that we did or did not lose?
Yeah, Carol, what, that, we have that high school number, but I don't know if, is there another page to this?
No, 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 it's, it's included in this, in this information by grades.
Yeah, but like you gave us the students that are returning.
But we don't have the undecided, we don't have the three undecideds of those eight that we haven't heard back from or said they haven't made up their mind yet.
Okay, so Stacy, there's, hold on. Let me pull up, yeah. Stacy had used my, so let me find mine, my, well, I'm gonna stop sharing.
Well, you look for that, that temperature check would just be nice because like the current or for next year's grade one where we chanced in three. If we knew, just as an example, that we had five staying at Children's First, that changes that grade completely. So it'd be nice to have an idea.
I think Bill can speak to that.
Okay, especially at that K level. Because that happened a few years back and then we ended up with this really, really large grade.
Well, we school choice in a bunch of kids.
Right, because similarly to, right.
So, okay. So I thought, um, so at Granby Junior Senior High School, there were five students, um, that were contacted. We have one eleventh grader that is returning, which I think.
Is it current junior or for projected junior?
Projected junior, and they're waiting to hear back from two tenth graders and two ninth graders. Is that how you understood it, Steven?
Sorry, I think we're waiting to hear back from one. And three said they hadn't made up their minds yet and would contact us when they did.
Yeah. The one and then three is four, right? But there are two tenth graders and there are two ninth graders is what they, they wanted to know the grade.
There'll be tenth and eleventh next year, yes.
Stacy, did you want to chime in?
I can't, I'm actually pulling up, um, the Children's First information based on what Tammy was able to gather, um, in her registrations. So let me just pull that up. We have, based on, um, what Tammy does for kindergarten registration is she uses the town census and contacts every family, um, that has a kindergarten age student. Right now, we have one student that's choosing not to attend because they're going to Children's First. Um, we have one, two, three, four, five, that just said they're not attending kindergarten. Um, there's one not attending because they're homeschooling. One is choosing to do pre-K for one more year and another one is moving out of state.
So the current number you have on this. So, the current number you have on this sheet is 34 residents?
Yep. So, those are the ones that have put in their registration packets.
No, aren't we looking at 49, we're talking about the current K?
Oh, she's talking K.
Oh, sorry, yep, 34.
Yes, 34, plus the 5 new choices. But I do understand that what has happened in the past is, in the summer, we have a number that, you know, finished completing their applications. So, that number always goes up.
That's just where I wish we could have kept that nest egg, like, as one of our small ones, because right now, that would have only been 34. We could have used that as almost like our reserves to keep 2 small classes, because that's actually, we had talked a few weeks ago about our current 4th grade, should be reflected in 5th being the smallest, but this incoming grade would be actually much smaller.
And just to kind of reiterate, this is a snapshot in time, so this is as of today. As the time goes on and we get to September, we're going to have an influx of, you know, moving into town, school choice requests, and those that are moving away, leaving. So, this is our best estimate as of right now. It could be completely different tomorrow or next week.
So, our current, which is, do the math here. We have 98 plus 18, so we have 111 school choice students, and I think last year, Stacy, we were 110, right?
Correct.
I'm right there, yep.
So, the 1 thing that I find disturbing is that our resident enrollment is, is lower than it's been in a while. We've been over 600 for the past couple of years, and we're only at 594. So, that just means to me that there's a lot more kids choicing out.
Well, this actually, on the report that Stacy did on the school choice previous, it was the resident enrollment at the time was 581.
And I thought we've been at like 600 or something, that's what we've been using for our numbers in the budget.
Well, you have to add all those numbers together to, to get the total. So, you're saying resident enrollment, so this was resident enrollment, my glasses aren't, I'm struggling to see. So, resident enrollment in 2019, 2020 was 605. In 2021, it dropped to 575.
Okay, so we're coming back a little bit, but that was,
If you add up the resident enrollment plus returning homeschool and returning private, you get up, and you get 11, right?
Are the returning homeschool and the returning private resident enrollment stuff?
Right, yes.
Right, so.
Oh, yes.
Otherwise, it'd be under,
Oh, so, so I thought that they were, So, the returning homeschool are not included in the resident enrollment?
Right. No, because they withdrew.
She was trying to break out to us who was,
I see. Okay, so we are over 600, we need to add in those 2.
Right, you add the 11 in.
Gotcha, sorry, sorry, I was reading it, I was not reading it correctly. Well, so I have a question, what are we capping the school choice numbers at? I'm just still kind of thinking.
Who voted?
I just feel like if we have 1 really small grade, it would be beneficial to consider keeping it really small.
The problem is, is once you vote,
Yes.
The seats open, you can't,
Right, well, did we vote for kindergarten? I didn't think we even had numbers, yeah.
We did, we voted 10. We voted 10 for kindergarten, 4 for first, 3 for second, 6 for 4.
Wait, 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 start, start again and read slower, 10 for kindergarten.
10 for kindergarten. 4 for first. 3 for second. 0 for third. 6 for fourth. 0 for 5. 2 for 6. 11 for 7. 6 for 8. 6 for 9. And 7 for 10. For a total of 68 seats.
I think this, we did have this discussion, about pay or not pay.
Well, because I feel like I thought that, I even remember Jen bringing up, like, can you tell us every single time we get a new school choice student? Because we were so unsure of where we were at that time.
Well, we were also at that time, at the beginning, where we had a significant budget issue, you know, where I said, you know, we've, we've got to, you know, and so, you guys voted to accept all of these seats. So, how many new seats have we filled? 13 of the 68.
Well, trust me, I want to fill all 68, just now that I'm looking at K only being, even with the current 5 at 39, I feel like we're going to take away from it.
Still have people who just have not completed their, you know, their registration, you know, that are residents that are going to increase the resident number, you know, past,
So, I'm struggling a little with her saying, Stacy sharing, that there were 5 that said that they were planning on putting their child in K. So, then are we going to see them again from 1st grade, and then end up with a mid-number again?
So, I do know that there were many Ks that did not come this year, and I don't know if they opted to go to K this year, or if they opted for first. Stacy or Bill, do either one of you know that?
The president says that they don't have to go to K, and they can go right to first.
Right, they don't have to go to K, but they could go to K.
So, right now, in the 1st grade numbers, it includes our resident Ks and choice Ks right now moving into 1st grade. And then there are 3 families coming from Children's First into the 1st grade. But, but don't know yet of any other students who will be entering 1st that may have skipped kindergarten last year. Those have not, there's been no registration packets or any talk of that yet.
And those 3 are not reflected in this number?
No, they are, they're added into that 1st grade number. We got confirmation today that those 3 families are coming from Children's First for 1st grade.
Stacy, I'm sorry, I just, it's children first, there's no S.
Oh, sorry, children first.
Yep. They put children first, that's their motto. And, so, for those kids that are returning, can we, they're not returning from Children's First, they are children-first families that are choicing in for school?
No, so they wouldn't be choicing in because they're residents?
Okay, so we, but we also have, so there's 3 choice in for 1st grade, and those, I thought you were saying that those are the families from Children's First?
They, but yes, no, they're not choice in, those are residents that went to Children's First for kindergarten and are coming here for 1st grade.
Okay, so there's 3 additional families then that are coming in?
Yes, so there'd be technically 46 currently enrolled students at East Meadow in kindergarten moving into 1st grade, and then 3 families, additional families coming from Children's First.
I'm sorry, say it again? It's late and I'm having trouble focusing, so you're saying,
No, that's okay, so there are 46 currently enrolled kindergartners, yep, that are moving into 1st grade. And then the 3 additional residents, which are children first.
So, now it's 49.
9, yep. And then, we're getting 4 school choice students that are coming back. 3 new requested school choice, and 1 is returning from private school to give us the 57 total in 1st grade.
And the returning private school would actually be a resident, so the resident number would be really 50. But they're coming back from private, so they weren't included in the resident number.
Okay, so, returning for 1st grade. I'm too tired to do that, okay. Any other questions on this?
So, next time I am bringing, you want to know who is leaving?
Yep.
For school choice.
Because I think it's important to know what's,
Right, like, even every year, we know however many kids are leaving that we just put in our, or it also is pretty much to know how many are we not paying out for anymore. But I guess you're also,
So, we have the number that, that, the last time, from the last report that she did do. And there are 2 12th graders. That, 1 went to Pioneer Valley Performing Arts. No, there's only 1. So, that's the only 12th grader that's currently out that we stopped paying for. But we also need to, I'll check on vocation, and I will check to see if there's any more that are going out.
And can I just interject on that one? We generally aren't notified of those that are leaving until school is done for the year. Those are generally our summer withdrawals. So, we may hear through, you know, the grapevine that a student is choosing to leave, but we won't get actual notification that they're leaving until school is out. So, I would be able to provide the number of students based on the January school attending report, which is all students that are going to charter private vocational that have to be reported back to the home district. But anything beyond that is kind of a guessing game.
The place to start, just so we can see.
Okay.
I, I think we just,
Well, we may know some of the vocational, because, or at least know that how many were accepted, we could probably, you know.
So, just my last question, so that I totally understand why we voted on prior, we cannot change as far as potentially that's set in stone. We can't amend it, we can't freeze it for a moment for 1 grade level.
No, and actually, we found that out, there shouldn't, we should have received the FAQ that,
Okay, as long as we know that, I just know we're going to go into budget again, and when I hear about potential not fulfilling, it makes sense to think I had to, we only have 2 really small groups, and 1's not even really, I mean, it's small, but not super small, if we had to go to 2 again. Okay, just wanted to clarify that we definitely,
Yeah, I mean, last year, we, the school committee did do that, and we shut it, and we found out after the fact that you want to open them.
Okay, thank you, I didn't know. Always a roll of the dice.
It's always a roll. All right, Adam, you're up if you have anything else.
I'm going to make this lightning fast.
We'll see about that.
I really just have a couple of things, 1, thank you obviously to members that participated in the public hearing tonight. I honestly wish there was more participation and more dialogue, but I do appreciate people who did speak up and, and ask questions, so thank you for that. FY21 budget, you'll have a full update next meeting. The kitchen at the high school, so we've been keeping you guys up to date. We are trying to move forward with making renovations, changes, updates, moderations, whatever we want to call it, to the kitchen in order to be able to use the space next year to provide lunches to kids returning to the high school. We had a meeting last week, I think it was, it was myself, Carol, Steven, representative and engineer from RW Hall, who was one of the contractors who did the roof here, Greg, the building inspector from the town, and Dick from the Board of Health, and kind of just put our thoughts and ideas together on how we should move forward with the, with the kitchen and the cafeteria as they stand now. And in the process of doing that, there were some parts of the kitchen that the engineer wanted to see when we met, and simultaneously, we had a asbestos inspection from the state, or, or an inspection from the state, and we were exposing some asbestos in the kitchen, so long story short, the kitchen at the high school right now is shut down due to that. It's not, it, it sounds like a big deal, it, it is a big deal. It's not a huge deal, though, because we weren't, we were really only using that kitchen to store food at this point. So, we've worked with chart wells to get out of the kitchen what we needed, so they can maintain their operation in the high school. So, nothing was really affected, except for now, the kitchen is sealed off because no one can be in there. And we have to figure out next steps to get that abated, which would have been in the process anyway, so, you know, as bad as it may sound, it was going to be part of the process, and better that we find it out now than, you know, midway through the process, and again, the kitchen wasn't being utilized really anyway, so, again, it sounds awful.
Wasn't being used this year.
Wasn't being used this year, again, though, in, in hopefully, in our process to, to update the kitchen, we were going to come across this anyway. So, that's where we stand right now with the kitchen at the high school. And we are going to try to move forward with some type of improvement to the kitchen, so that we can be able to utilize it and prep food in there, and be able to serve kids in the cafeteria, and allow for the proper amount of airflow in the cafeteria, so we can use the kitchen to prep food, and use the cafeteria to serve the food and feed kids. So, we are, we are in that process, and I will update you guys as we, as we move forwards.
I think we're right now, have to do a study.
Yeah, we're going to, we're, we all met last week, we had some really good conversation for about an hour or so, we kind of went back and forth on what we think we should do for next steps. Do we address just, just the kitchen? Because addressing just the kitchen would allow us to prep food and use it and make it operational, but it doesn't address the lack of airflow in the cafeteria, so we'd be prepping food but not able to serve it in the cafeteria. Do we do a hybrid, so we update the kitchen, you know, as minimally as possible, and address airflow in the cafeteria? So, we're, we're at a point now where we're going to get a little bit of a study done to see what the costs of that project would be. Again, it's kind of, we're going for the statement of interest for MSBA, so we're very cognizant of any work that we do to the kitchen. In this process is hopefully stuff that we can, you know, we wouldn't have to redo when we got a new building or updated the building, so there's, there's a lot of moving pieces in this process. So, I will update you guys again, once we have some more information on that, but that's where we are right now, is going to commission, hopefully, some type of study that will be able to guide us in that direction, so.
And where are you with my number?
So, so Steven, Steven alluded to it, so, the building inspector was here, and we talked about, and Steven, if, if I'm wrong, or you want to add anything, please jump in. He believes, based on the, the work that we've done in the roof, and most of the building being ADA compliant, that we would, if we were to get to that threshold, there's not a lot of updating that we would need to do to the building, so,
So, what is the threshold?
What's that?
So, what is the threshold?
So, again, what? It's a, it's 30% of the assessed value of the building.
Okay.
Except for, and that would trigger the ADA compliance.
Right, which, which we say that, right, and we think all this, there's going to be so many improvements to the building, but, but according to the building inspector, there wouldn't be that many updates needed. Because, yes, we would address them.
You know, there's some things like that, but you said most of that was up to date.
In which building inspector did you tap to, I'm just going to call myself.
Greg Briggs is the only one that I'm aware of in the town.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, I can confirm, he said that, and he said, you're better off doing it the right way, even if it costs more money, and it wouldn't trip anything that he was concerned about at that point. And he's the one that would make the call if it did get tripped.
Excellent.
That's all I have.
Jen?
We have a meeting next week. Okay, so, we have already an open executive session, but we will be discussing additional things, so I need to have you guys vote to enter into the new executive session. Is there anything else before we go that route? Anything else anyone wants to say, just to extend the meeting a few more minutes?
Anything else anyone wants to say? Just to extend the meeting a few more minutes. We good? Okay.
I have to did, but I'll wait until next week.
Uh, oh, we do actually have to. When's our next meeting gonna be? We have to decide that before we go in. I gotta check, because I thought I had one. I I have one on June first. That was our, I have one June first and June fifteenth. That's okay. I just programmed him into my phone, so those are the dates that we that we had out. So um, so we don't need to do that. So uh, what did you have, Stephanie?
I was just gonna share real quick Robin's little Robyn's email. I thought that that would just be nice um to not let that drag on too long. Just that Robin LaMortar had reached out to us to let us know that there was, that when she was at West Street, she had applied for a horticultural grant through Massachusetts Teacher Association, that with that grant, she had raised, had seven raised planting beds that were purchased and the soil to fill them. Karen Mo, a boy scout, is working on an Eagle Scout project and he's in the process of creating some handicap accessible raised beds to join the others in the courtyard. He's also building picnic tables for the courtyard, which is using the remaining funding from that grant as well as donations. Um, just, well, she would just reach out to us about the great project and to make another learning experience for all of our students in Granby and just had said that how, you know, privileged she has been to be with us for thirty years. I just wanted to take a minute and thank Karen Mo for choosing to do this for our school. I think it's great and um I look forward to seeing it. I'm sure everyone.
When they get involved, it's beautiful out there.
And thanks to Robin for letting us know.
Absolutely.
Okay, um, so vote to enter into executive session under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Thirty A, Section Twenty-One, Part A, Three to discuss strategy with regard to collective bargaining. As doing so in an open session may have a detrimental effect on the bargain bargaining position of the committee. The committee will not return to open session. Jacqueline, can you do roll call, please?
Hi.
Hi.